Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the May 21st, 2024 Board of Commissioners meetings. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, no communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I'd ask Sheriff Brian Mueller to come up and say a few words in honor of National Peace Officer Week, May 12th through the 18th to 24, and then followed by the moment of silence and the pledge allegiance by Mr. Mueller.
Morning, Commissioner. I'm Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. I appreciate the moment of personal privilege here to recognize Law Enforcement Memorial Week, which was last week. We had 136 law enforcement officers lost their life in the country last year, and we're at 59 so far this year. Last week, we were able to send a sergeant and a deputy out to Washington, D.C., where Katie Leising was memorialized on the National Law Enforcement Memorial Wall last week, and that was a pretty impactful thing for our staff, but I was happy that we were able to go out there and support Katie's family and the LaCroy County Sheriff's Office where she was serving when she was killed in the line of duty. And so I just appreciate the moment of silence today to be in recognition of Law Enforcement Memorial Week, and we appreciate those who have given the ultimate sacrifice and those that continue to show up to work every day willing to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next in our agenda is review and approval of the agenda.
Move by Drews.
Move by Drews, seconded by Hagcock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us up to the consent agenda, and I'll recognize Commissioner Manager Holly Hennings.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of May 7th, 2024; Number six is the approval of the minutes for the Board of Equalization hearings held in April 2024; Number seven is to acknowledge the election agreements and that the Auditor's Office will conduct a combined election for the City of Rapid City, the Rapid City School District, the Cluster School District, the Hill City School District, the City of Hill City, and the City of Quinn, all to be held on June 4th, 2024; Number eight is to approve the renewal of the retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine licenses for Jolly Lane Greenhouse, Inc., and to release the license upon a payment of appropriate property taxes; Number nine is to acknowledge the notice sent in to conduct a raffle for the Performing Arts Center of Rapid City; Number 10, excuse me, number 10 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of April 2024; and number 11 is to renew the Social Solutions Global Apricot software and to purchase five additional user licenses through the Bureau of Justice Innovations and Reentry Grant as submitted by Human Services.
Thank you, Holly. At this time, are there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Roskin, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This brings us to our regular agenda items. Item number 12 was a request to name courtroom C2 as the Jeff W. Davis Memorial Courtroom, and I'll recognize Honorable Judge Hybly.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. First, let me thank you on behalf of the court system for allowing us to use the building and the rotunda to host the Jeff W. Davis Memorial Ceremony. For those that you were able to attend, I think it was pretty impactful and meaningful, and I think it spoke loudly about the impact Judge Davis had on our system and particularly that building. One of the things that we would like to do in recognition of those long years of service is recognize courtroom C2. That's the historically restored courtroom that Judge Davis was intimately involved with having completed as the Jeff W. Davis Memorial Courtroom, and I'm here this morning asking for commission approval to allow us to do that. Our expectation is, if that is approved, that consistent with the wishes of the Davis family to have a short memorial naming ceremony the afternoon of June 20 at 4:00 p.m. in C2 to recognize that that henceforth would be called the Jeff W. Davis Memorial Courtroom. That is our request here today. With that, I'll take any questions.
Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
Could you read on this, or I could read it, why you moved this forward? I think it's important for the public to hear.
Sure.
I really like what you wrote, and I thought, like you said, spoke loudly about Judge Davis, and I think the public at this point would see the reasoning behind it if they don't know Judge Davis.
I'll do this, if you don't mind, Commissioner Hagcock. What I'll do is read the letter that I presented to Ms. Hennings as part of our request that I hope that the Commissioners have as part of their packet. Dear Holly, my right to request board approval of the court's request to name courtroom C2 in the Pennington County Courthouse as the Jeff W. Davis Memorial Courtroom. Please share this request with the board and let me know what additional information the board needs regarding that request. Based upon conversations with Kathy Davis, we would hope to have commission approval accomplished for a dedication ceremony tentatively scheduled for the afternoon of June 20 of 2024. Jeff W. Davis was appointed to the Seventh Circuit bench by Governor William Janklow in 1979. Judge Davis served our circuit in that role until his retirement in 2020. At the time of his retirement, he was one of South Dakota's longest-tenured circuit judges. During his time serving our community, he served as a fair and capable judge. Those of you who were able to attend his memorial service in the courthouse heard many stories of his significant and long-term impact upon justice in our community. Judge Davis also had a significant impact upon the physical look of the county courthouse. He was integral to the multiple projects adding to and remodeling of courthouse space. The current configuration of the courthouse is a direct result of Jeff's contributions. Further, he was instrumental in the building of the current county administration building. Judge Davis's extended service on the county building committee was a textbook example of vision and leadership. We think it appropriate to honor Jeff's service to our state, county, and community by recognizing the courtroom for which he was incredibly proud, courtroom two. That courtroom has been remodeled to reflect an historically accurate courtroom in our building. It is clearly a showplace for our facility. We believe naming that courtroom in his honor recognizes his contributions and honors his work.
Thank you, Judge Hybly. I also know that Mike Peterson, Buildings and Grounds, worked with Judge Davis to make that what it is today, and recognition of Mike Peterson and their friendship was pretty tight, but he also did many of the work with his team, Mike Peterson, did to remodel the courthouse. So, thank you for reading that. I think it's important that the public knows that, and the letter was well-written. Thank you.
I think if we dove behind the story, Commissioner Hagcock, we'd find that many of the plans for courtroom two were hatched over a cocktail napkin.
Over at BMW. But I would make the motion to move to name the courtroom C2 in Pennington County Courthouse as the Jeff W. Davis Memorial Courtroom.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Lassiter.
The Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Greg, I want to thank you for your time and efforts for putting this together. Very well-deserved to rename C2.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Commissioner Roskin. It was one of the things that when Kathy Davis and I visited a little bit about her request to be able to use the rotunda for Jeff's memorial service, that I wanted to find a way to honor forever Jeff's long-term service to those of us that live in Pennington County in the Seventh Circuit, and I felt that that particular courtroom of which she was incredibly proud was a way to do that. So, thank you for considering it.
Thanks.
My comment would be is, I think it's very fitting. When I first come on board, I toured with Mike and Mr. Davis to tour C2 courtroom because of the historic value and all the work that they just tried to try and find all the stuff and create molds. The Buildings and Grounds staff did amazing work on getting that done. But also, my fondest memory of Mr. Davis was probably 15 to 20 years ago when him and Holloway had convened a group together to work with the Juvenile Detention Center with the JBAI and tried to reduce numbers and so forth, and they were very hard-working and persistent in moving that forward, and they did good work, and Mr. Davis's service is valued and with all his inputs will live on forever.
Thank you for that, Commissioner LaCroy. I think that your comments remind us all what a visionary he was for what we needed to accomplish here in Pennington County.
All right. Thank you.
Any further comments from the Commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Judge. Next, that brings us up to items from the auditor, and I'll recognize Cindy Moller. This is the new license for retail off-sale for wine cider license for Black Hills Helicopters. Ms.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Moller, Pennington County Auditor. And yes, that first one is the new retail on-sale wine and cider license for Black Hills Helicopters, Inc. We'd ask approval of that license.
Is there any questions for Cindy on this list?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Move to approve the new retail on-off sale wine and cider license for Black Hills Helicopters, Inc.
Second.
Moved by Roskin, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B.
The next item that we have is a couple of transfers, or transfer of retail on-sale liquor license with Sunday sales and a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license from Gaslight Rockerville Alps LLC to Gaslight Gold Town LLC.
So, we need two separate motions on this?
You could do two, or you could combine them, and the one is fine as well.
Mr. Roskin.
I'll go ahead and make the motions. Move to approve the transfer of retail on-sale liquor license with Sunday sales from the Gaslight under Rockerville OPPS LLC to Gaslight under Gold Town LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Drews. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Move to approve the transfer of retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license from Gaslight under Rockerville OPPS LLC to Gaslight under Gold Town LLC.
Second.
Moved by Roskin, seconded by Drews. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Next, we come up to item number 14, and items from the sheriff, and I'll recognize Sheriff Brian Mueller.
Good morning again, Commission. Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff, but I'm here today to request a motion to reinstate an accountant-one position within our office. We had an opportunity to reorganize with, we have several long-term accountants, and we've done some reorganization. Commissioner Hagcock was out at our joint powers meeting last week and got to talk through a little bit of that with us. We moved our accounting, long-term accountant from the Juvenile Services Center over to the care campus, and she was going to be an office manager. We're moving a senior accountant, a 29-year accountant within our office, out to the Juvenile Services Center to be the office manager out there, so that created a vacancy, and we saw that as an opportunity for us to bring somebody in with a good-based foundation and teach them all the skills of accounting within the Sheriff's Office, the complexities of it, and work alongside Courtney Rayberg, who is our senior accountant. So, this is actually an opportunity to reduce, save some money, and bring somebody in to train them into the role.
Thank you, Brian. Is there any questions for Mr. Mueller?
Nope, I'll make the motion, if I could, Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
Move to approve and reinstate an accountant-one position of the Sheriff's Office at DBMB23, Base 2334, and to authorize Human Resources to update the position listing.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Drews.
Yeah.
Ms. Hagcock.
Thank you for bringing these forward. Like I said, it's always nice to have a discussion, and that discussion was at JSC some of it, but then you reiterated what we talked about, which I appreciate. It's always good for the public to know why and where these things happen and what DBM and hourly rate, I'll keep saying it, for the public's information. That way, when we have to back it up, we also can send them to this meeting and say, "Item 14, that's where we did it and why we did it." So, sometimes when you don't have any backup, it's harder to say why. So, I appreciate you bringing your stuff forward, and I'll keep saying that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next, this brings us up to item 15, items from Buildings and Grounds, and I'll recognize Building and Grounds Director Davis Purcell.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Davis Purcell, Buildings and Grounds Director. So, we currently have an immediate need for discretionary spending at the 900 concourse building. There's a substantial amount of cubicles and other miscellaneous furniture that not only need to be broken down, but also stored during construction to not cause any limitations for the contractors. There will also be future needs for more discretionary spending during this project, but this is just the immediate ask right now. And just, I want to reiterate too, B&amp;G will carefully prioritize and manage discretionary spending, and will bring to you, you know, any discretionary budget spending breakdown every time we ask for these needs. So, I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
So, if I'm hearing you correct, this was something that wasn't planned, a cost that wasn't planned, so now you're having to adjust fire on something?
It's not a cost that wasn't planned, it's just not in the scope of the project. We didn't put, as far as breaking down and palletizing the cubicles, we did not have that in the scope. As far as making the contractor do that, we're actually trying to save some costs by either doing it ourselves or hiring it out and being the general contractor for that sort of project, so.
Got you, Mr. Chair. Follow-up. In the future, is it possible to have kind of maybe an Excel spreadsheet like I've seen in some other presentations where we're seeing how much has been allocated and how much we're spending, so it kind of gives us a better idea when we're doing allocating monies from the funds and stuff?
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, and I plan to do that with all the discretionary spending for this project as well, so, and we can break it down when those needs arise.
You done? Ms. Hagcock.
So, I agree. I'm not against discretionary funding or spending on stuff, not funding, but spending, but I think we should have a budget where that budget came from, the $7 million or whatever that we had in the beginning, and then when you're taking away or whatever you're spending the money on should be on a spreadsheet. So, discretionary spending should be on that scope of the project. It also should be so that we, the Commission and the public, can see what we're spending the money on to redo those buildings. So, I haven't seen any of them yet. We've been asking for them, Mr. Davis. I've seen the costs, that some 7.2 was last. It's just business, and it's for us to see as a commission what we're spending and what that balance is at the end of the day. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, if we could start doing that, and when you bring that up there, I'll just call you if you need to. I didn't think I needed to at this point. Been saying it. I think it'd be appropriate when you're doing 900 concourse, when you're doing across the street, when you're doing the jail, when you're doing anything. We used to have a spreadsheet that used to say, "Okay, this is how much we're spending, this is how much it's going to cost," and then they'd also have basically a contingency fund, which they had to use, sometimes and other times they did not. So, it was nice to see that spreadsheet coming up here and then being able to justify discretionary funds or anything else on that project. It's easier for me to vote on that way than just saying, "Okay, 150, I don't know if it's in the scope of the project or if it's not. We didn't put that in there, but it's got to be taken off the total," right?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep, and I understand that. So, we actually have our bid opening for 900 concourse on the 30th of this month.
Okay.
So, we'll have some more hard numbers on what those renovation costs are, and then I'm working with Cindy Chapman, my project manager, to get all of the outside-of-the-scope numbers, which is additional FFNE, you know, network systems for computers and phone systems, cameras, and exterior, interior signage, and also the ABI equipment for the new commission chamber and other conference rooms. So, we'll try to break that down and show you what's included in the project and what is not, and what we will need to complete that project, so.
It would be nice, because the last I heard it was 7.2 for that, remember, for the 900 concourse. We haven't got the bids in yet, but then we're doing discretionary funding, and we don't know the totals yet by that bid, and how much, do you have 150 left, or is it on the total of the 7.2?
No, we do have the necessary funding for the 150 right now, and that's why I'm only asking for the 150, because we haven't seen those bids come back yet. We've only had estimates of what that project is going to cost.
So, is it coming out of your B&amp;G fund, or is it coming out of what fund?
No, it is coming out of the capital project fund, so.
Okay.
The same that's funding the renovation costs.
Okay, and the renovation costs for the $7 million came from where?
The bond money.
Okay, so we had $45 million on the bond, and at least 32, 28 to 32 was the jail. I guess I'm trying to figure out how we're doing the numbers, and I'll keep saying at that point, too, that we're $9 million short on this building because we did not get the city funding. So, I'm trying to figure out, and that's why I'm asking you for full disclosure of how you're doing your buildings, what those buildings are cost, and then when you're taking away, that comes through us to say, "Okay, we have $437,000. What is your priority? What is left?" Because this is how much we have. Do we have enough money to keep moving forward and do what we do on each building, or are we going to have to cut some? Because that's what happened on this building, that's why I'm saying it. By the time they were done, they had to cut costs because they didn't have enough money, and where they cut costs, it cost us to go buy another building. So, it's legitimate what I'm saying to you guys, just because we don't want to find out at the end that we have to cut costs because we did not budget enough for those buildings or the jail or any of these projects to be finished. We have to wait till later, or we just make those projections smaller. So, again, it costs the first time on this old building that same issue, so we don't want to repeat that pattern. That's why I ask you for those budgets and what we're having on each of those, and you can't do some of it, Dave, or Mr. Purcell, superintendent, because you have to get the bids, I understand, but some of it, be careful spending discretionary and other things until you know those numbers.
Yes, yep, no, I understand where you're coming from, and like I said, we will have some more finite numbers on concourse and also the public defender side of the bank. That is also out, being advertised right now, and we'll open those bids as well, so we'll have a better understanding of what we have left, and then we can certainly provide an itemized breakdown of that total money or that, you know, that total package that we're looking at, not only for those two projects, but for the jail as well, so.
It would be nice to see the projects and where the money's coming from and at the bottom line, not to be cut any of these issues, because the biggest issue, I think, at the time was the jail and the infrastructure, and to have to do less because we ran out of money on that bond, I think would be unfortunate, but that's not, I'm not saying that's going to happen, I'm saying that's a lot of cash flow in different areas that we don't want to do less than because we bought too many buildings, so.
I understand, and to be fully transparent, I do not plan to spend the total $150,000 right now. It will be significantly less than that to start with, but we have to get those cubicles palletized, we have to get them stored to allow the contractor in there, and like I said, I'll be forthright with those numbers as they come in, so.
And Buildings and Grounds representative or supervisor or whatever you call it, superintendent, I can't even get names, I asked Brian, I always mess his up. So, I'm not against discretionary funding, I'll just keep saying that. I just need to see the numbers, me and this Commission, I think, for the bottom line. So, even if it's $50,000 or $25,000, it's nice to know where those totals are coming from. I trust that you're going to, and you have already, showing that some of your team is doing some of the work, that's what we've always done in Pennington County, the courthouse, as we've known, has done the same thing with Peterson and your team that was there before, so.
Sure.
It's just to see the numbers, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Drews.
I move to authorize Buildings and Grounds Director Davis Purcell, spending authority of $150,000 for capital project funds for the initial renovation costs of the newly-acquired property located at 900 concourse with the understanding that all procurement will follow South Dakota procurement rules.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Roskin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Davis.
Yep, thank you.
Next, that brings us up to items from Emergency Services Communication Center, and I'll recognize Kevin Carley.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Carley, Director, Emergency Services Communication Center. My first item this morning is a request to allow KNBN to place weather cameras on three of our five county-owned radio towers, Rockerville, Hill City, and Keystone. We were approached by Jim Simpson from KNBN a few months ago, and they were looking to expand their cadre of weather cameras, and they thought that those three locations would be good. They offer a very good view of the hills and some of the highways up there, and so we've negotiated a two-year term contract at an amount of $150 per site per month, which from what our research tells us is the going rate for this type of thing. And we also have some projections built in so that this equipment can't cause any interference with our existing systems, so our radio technology limits our access to the site. Time is scheduled through our texts, our texts will probably be present. So, I feel very good about the agreement that we've put together, and I do think that it's going to be a benefit to the county and our citizens as well because it will expand that weather camera cadre, so I'm ask for your approval of that and take any questions.
Chair.
Thanks, Kevin. Ms. Hagcock.
Have we, we've done this before, where we have, do we have multiple people's
No, we've
Radio towers or whatever on our buildings?
We've always been, well.
Towers?
This is our first venture down this highway with weather cameras. We've always been open to co-location agreements on our towers, but we've never been able to reach an agreement with an outside entity that we felt was beneficial to the county. This one, even though it's a minimal source of revenue, it's also a minimal impact on our system as well, so we feel that this is a win-win.
Well, yes, that is, they won't interfere with anything that we already have for your communication and everything up there. I'm only saying that, Kevin, because when we, I used to go on top of the tower, the water tower up on 16, and some of that was causing a little bit of issues having multiple up there. I just wondered if it really isn't going to impact it, maybe that's why before that we haven't done this before.
In the time that I've been here as director, we haven't pursued any of these agreements just simply because we can never get past the first step of reaching an agreement that was beneficial to both of us, so.
Okay, because I thought Ted, back in the day, had brought one forward, and it didn't work out, but, and when you do, and we did visit about this, I think it's a positive and anything we can do to help the community, I just didn't know if it interfered, and if it does, can that contract be terminated because it is causing some issues?
Yes, that's determined in the contract that it can't cause any interference with our existing systems.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So, Kevin, I think the real time is a big plus for this, especially for residents that are looking at seeing what's happening at the current time and stuff, so this is a great proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Roskin.
So, will these, once they're installed, can the general public then get on that internet or whatever to actually see lifetime?
Yes, they'll be available through KNBN's weather site on the internet. They'll add that to their camera cadre.
It's hard to believe that you can really have some extreme weather conditions from Rapid City to between these three communities, so.
Yeah.
I really think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thanks. I also noticed in the agreement that it's 150 per site, and you built in the 3% increase every year.
Yes, a 3% annually increase, yes.
Okay. Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to authorize KNBN to I'd move to authorize KNBN to install three weather cameras, one each at Rockerville, Keystone, and Hill City radio tower sites.
Thank you.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lester. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Item B.
Uh, item B is a request to, um, add a new position to the ESCEC of Technology Manager. Uh, we currently don't have that position here. We have a, our technology position is a Deputy Director of Technology. And my intention here is twofold. Um, number one, I don't believe that currently, uh, the duties of that position rise to the level of a Deputy Director, and I think it's better served in a manager position. If you recall, last summer, I came in and, and asked for approval of an Operations Manager position. That was between the floor-level staff and our Operations Director, and I think that this position is better suited at that level as well. And, um, I don't intend to alter the current Deputy Director of Technology position, um, leave that vacant where it's at, um, with no intention of filling it, because I don't believe at this time it's, we, it's just no need to have two Deputy Directors and, and two Managers, so. Um, but leave that position there in case down the road something changes. Um, the second, um, thing is that it allows me to update the, the job description and the, the position description and allow for what we're seeing in the future of the center. There's more of a emphasis on IT side of things as we move forward. And by updating the position description, it allows me to emphasize the ITC to think, IT side of things more. I've asked for either a degree in IT or similar experience with someone that would have a, a, a degree in IT, because I believe that everything that we're seeing now, I think in the next five years especially, and probably, you know, actually moving forward the entire future is that we're going to need somebody that has an understanding of IT systems so that we can work with vendors. They have an understanding of our IT systems here in the county, they can work closely with our IT department and know what systems will work here, which systems won't, or which systems we can integrate to work here. And, um, we've had a couple of challenges with that already just in the last couple of years, so we're at that point where I, I think it's necessary for us to do that.
Chair.
This haircut.
So I was at a LAPC meeting, and, um, Kevin, uh, took me back to, uh, give me a tour of their new training area where Nicole was training new hires, I think you, and then showing me his office where he could, uh, meet with people instead of having it in the huge office when it's only like two or three people and his staff and his team. Um, he also explained what he was doing with the Deputy Director, which made sense. He wanted him, um, a person, uh, not he, a person to, um, be in technology just so that would be the key area that they would be working on. Because trying to make a Deputy Director try to do multiple tasks with IT, uh, believing in the next five years, the innovation and the things that they have to do, it's going to be huge. Um, I agreed that, um, it was a good step, and Kevin was looking towards the future of his people. Also, the training and everything that has been given, and it's a lot quieter in there, I noticed, than trying to train with everybody around, so. Um, thank you for the tour the other day, Kevin, and also the explanation of the Technology Manager. Appreciate it, then.
Any further discussion from the Commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I move to approve a new position of Technology Manager, DBMC forty-two, two thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars and forty cents bi-weekly, and update the position listing on file.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Hagcock. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Next, this brings us up to item number seventeen, items from Fire Administrator, uh, Fire Administrator Jerome Harvey.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jerome Harvey, Fire Administrator, Pennington County, South Dakota. Uh, before you today, we have a request on our mutual aid agreement with Ellsworth Air Force Base. The mutual aid agreement isn't just for fire, it's for floods, fires, famines, hazardous materials, situations. But the Fire Service does use the agreement the most, and therefore the agreement has historically resided with the, uh, Fire Office. Eighteen of our twenty fire departments are affected by the agreement. The agreement no longer covers the Rapid City Fire Department with the issues that they have uh, as far as aircraft responsibility that they have themselves. A couple of things on the agreement, it's probably the most extensive, um, review of the agreement that has happened in the history of the agreement. We were working on it prior to the pandemic, and that all shut down, uh, obviously. But it's been reviewed by South Dakota Municipal League Risk Management Personnel. It's been reviewed by the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. We had those personnel in an actual meeting. All of our fire departments have the same insurance carrier. It's been reviewed by that insurance carrier, our own in-house, uh, Risk Management. Walter's here with us today, and also with our, uh, legal review, has also taken a look at the agreement here. Um, don't kid yourself about the agreement. It does put some onus on to the county. It's a situation that Fire Department simply would not have the capability of, of, uh, providing their own protection or able to do this. So there is some, some putback on the county that's historic. It's the language that's been used, or is being used by all the agreements across the country. Uh, when we did talk with the Fire Department's insurance companies on, uh, page three in the agreements, and the language that's in there that was reviewed by, um, all the parties that we talked about, it's the very same language that's being used in the, um, agreements for the, uh, bridge situation in Baltimore right now. So everybody's looked at it, um, we're comfortable with all the apartments, the eighteen fire departments that this does affect have all agreed with the agreement, to stick with the agreement, and understand that there's some issues they will not be able to bring back to the, um, Ellsworth Air Force Base. Uh, just a couple of things, uh, just prior to the pandemic, uh, Ellsworth is recognized as the number one fire department in the entire Air Force system. Uh, this is the first agreement in the nation, the historic agreement, it goes back. Uh, Ellsworth Air Force Base, yeah, historically has come off the base to help us. Uh, we do use them more than we go on to the base. We have gone on the base this past calendar year and helped them with an incident there. Uh, but this agreement is the agreement, the original agreement is the one that's been used, uh, for the base agreement across the nation. So there's some history, some very positive history between Pennington County and the, um, Ellsworth Air Force Base and the Fire Department. Uh, we do need to get a copy, the copy of this on a wet signature out to the base. They do one signature, then we'll get all back and get all the appropriate copies and et cetera, made from there. Uh, Solomon, do you have any, Counselor, do you have any questions or comments or anything?
Well. Any questions? I'll take any questions.
Chair.
This haircut.
No questions. Um, long time coming. Um, I love, uh, Ellsworth Air Force Base and their Fire Department, but I think, I think ours is still number one as our volunteer fire departments, working with you guys for eight, nine years, and then doing this mutual one. I'll just tell you, um, the volunteer fire, uh, departments, there's about four hundred and fifty that volunteered in Pennington County, that's huge. So, um, I think this is a long time coming. Mutual agreements are also made with our Sheriff's Office and other entities. In Pennington County, this is just one more step for our Fire Department. Um, thank you for getting this done. Um, thank you, Val, she probably helped with some of this, and your team. Um, it's going to move us ahead, and plus, like I said, we have a lot of agreements with other, other, um, excuse me, other entities in Pennington County, so. Um, one more step of adding to our team and making a difference is huge, so thank you for doing this, you and your team, uh, Jerome.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinet.
Jerome, is this agreement, uh, year of the year?
No, it's not. This, uh, the agreement is actually in effect for, the last agreement I had was fifteen years. It, this agreement, the updating an agreement from the end of the Air Force is coming down from the Pentagon. It does, ha, has nothing to do with the change of command at the airbase whatsoever. And it, um, it's just some updating as far as some of their language. Um, they actually, FEMA just updated their mutual aid, um, guidebook, if you will. It goes out nationwide, and it's amazing, the language is the same that's in that. So there's kind of been kind of a nationwide effort to, from the Pentagon, to score up some of its agreements back to the local communities. So it is not done on a yearly basis.
But over the years, it can be amended and...
Yeah, but it, it needed to be, you know, never say never, but historically, there's never been a problem. And when we went on to the base this past calendar year, the, the, the benefit to the taxpayers in the county is, is everybody knows everybody. It's not like it's a big deal for us to work with, 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 um, Ellsworth. I've been in a situation elsewhere where there's not that kind of agreement. Or type of relationship between the local emergency community and the military, and it causes some real issues. And here, there we, I can't stress that enough, we don't have that. And that really played off when the, it plays off our, our taxpayers when they come off the base to help us. And Ellsworth is a big deal for our economy. When they had a crisis, we went right on to the base, there was no questions at all about it. But no, it is not done on a yearly basis.
So it's terminated based on?
Mr. Roskinet has the floor.
So it's terminated based on that?
Yeah, it's just, it's just some, some updating in the language that the, that the, uh, Pentagon want to do. We have been in direct contact with the, uh, Air Force, uh, Fire Office at the Pentagon on this very issue here.
Thank you, Jerome.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinet.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the mutual aid agreement between Ellsworth Air Force Base Fire Department and Pennington County for mutual aid and fire and emergency services.
Moved by Roskinet, seconded by Lassiter. My, my comment is, Jerome is, this, it, it's always good to have a review, because as administrations change, they don't remember their agreements and so forth, so I think, uh, good thorough review that you guys did, I think, was important so everybody's aware of it and, and on the same page, so I think you guys did an amazing job working together with this to.
Yeah, absolutely, and it was timed, there was, you, you hit that, you write on the letters, change in personnel, change in verbiage and way things are happening, and it's just good to go through this, this type of level. And again, we have copies of all the departments saying that they agree to this on their letterhead. So it's not, it's not, we're not, we're not doing it in a vacuum.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thanks, Jerome.
Thank you.
Next, this brings us up to items eighteen, which is items from the Highway Department, and I'll recognize Superintendent Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Uh, up in front of you here is an agreement with the State of South Dakota, um, for some funding from safety dollars from the federal government here. Um, this leverages safety dollars to install flashing LED stop signs at the intersection of Country Road and Elk Vale. Um, several ish, several safety issues with this intersection going back several years. I looked this morning on just the last five years, and there have been seventeen, uh, crashes at this location. So we've been looking at this location for several, several years. Um, we, we've seen these, what's kind of sparked my, the idea for, uh, these flashing LED signs that are motion-activated is the Boulder Canyon going into Deadwood with the, the flashing arrows that go into there. So I was kind of piqued my interest and looked into it, and there's a stop sign out there that does that. I think they'll do a little bit more, bring the, the driver's attention to the stop sign rather than just having the, this circular sign on, or the circular light on the top of the sign. Um, that along with the, uh, transverse rumble strips to get distracted drivers' attention that, hey, there's something that needs your attention here ahead, so. Um, funding, a hundred percent federally funded, um, cost of the signs are about ten thousand dollars, I think, ten thousand six hundred. Um, so that's all a hundred percent paid for by the state, the, the federal government. Um, the county, the county is responsible for installation and then ongoing maintenance after that, so that's where the county's, uh, contribution comes in, so with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
What's the annual cost for the county on annual maintenance for that? That's rough.
Very, very little. I mean, probably for the next ten years, you know, unless it gets hit, um, zero, um, after the installation. And then, then if it does get hit by a car or something like that, generally we, we recoup those costs from the insurance carrier, so.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I, I'd like this idea, Joe. I, I know that we're, that area well, and I think, I don't know how many fatalities have been there, but I know one in particular. But, uh, it is, people just kind of fly through there, and I think the motion-activated lights would be, and the rumbles are really going to help out in that area, so we appreciate you, uh, going after this grant.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Move to approve the joint powers agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for project number PHOOSW seven-two PCNO-five WJ, provide for the installation of signing and delineation, safety improvements at the intersection of County Road and Elk Vale Road.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lester. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Next, this brings us up to item number nineteen, items from Building Committee, and I'll recognize Construction Manager Kevin Burton.
Morning Commissioners. Um, for you today, we have a, um, Construction Manager-at-Risk, um, proposal that I brought forth as a recommendation from the Building Committee last meeting. This was for the new jail tower, um, partnering with Skull Construction to work through the design process, estimating, and constructibility of the new jail, um, to help us lock in good pricing on all of that. So today, looking for a motion to approve the contract with, um, Skull Construction in the amount of seventy-seven thousand dollars for pre-construction services.
Is there any questions for Mr. Burton?
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
So far, I haven't seen the budget, and I don't know how much we're taking away from the budget from all the, the different, even the seventy-seven thousand. What, do you know what the budget is for the jail yet?
We had a original fifty-two million dollars, um, that is split up into multiple buckets of money. We're waiting to finalize that budget until we actually have hard numbers from the bids that come back next week. So we have bids coming back for nine hundred concourse building. There were three alternates built into that, so that gives us flexibility in the amount of money that we have for that project. We also have the west side of the Public Defender Building, um, fourteen St. Joe, coming in next week. Um, so we'll have a lot better idea, rather than just estimating and guestimating on a budget, I'd rather bring real hard firm numbers before you, so that we know exactly where we stand. And so we're waiting until we actually receive those bids next week.
Look, Kevin, I'll keep saying without, I don't know at this point which one and how much we have budgeted. If we have thirty-two for the jail, and we have ten for the concourse, and we have five for the, um, how much money do we have left, and how much do you have budgeted for each of those? And if they overrun, then where's the money come from?
So we have brought our estimates before the commission showing that breakdown. Um, essentially, we had eight point six million dollars for nine hundred concourse and the PDO building. Um, the current estimate for the nine hundred concourse building was seven point two, as you had mentioned before. But that also included the three alternates that we have in there, which is about one point three million dollars. So that gives us some flexibility in what we can accept and what we can't accept. So the, the base building is just over six million dollars to meet our twenty-year projection and give everything they need inside the building. The alternates include an approach, second approach, so that it's a life, health, safety egress issue with that parking lot, which is one issue, um, one egress spot, so we'd like to include that, that's right around a hundred thousand dollars. The Buildings and Ground Shop is, um, right around half million dollars, estimated. None of these are hard numbers, this is all just engineers' estimates. So, um, those are the budgets we're going through. The rest of it is a parking lot repair that is built in as an alternate.
Right.
Um, that's something that, you know, we can see what the numbers come back at, see if it's a reasonable cost. If it's not a reasonable cost, we can easily pull that out as an alternate. That's almost a half million dollars. That gives us flexibility for the discretionary spending that Davis asked for earlier. It gives us, um, flexibility in the, in a lot of the other areas. Um, the Public Defender Building, we are, we've asked for discretionary spending twice, at three hundred thousand dollars. We're only at about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that building right now. I don't, I didn't bring those numbers with me, I have them in there, but like I said, I'm waiting to update the budget and bring it forth next meeting when we actually ask for bid awards.
So you'll have all of those broken down in pieces for us, so we can see how much is in the budget, how much it costs. And I'll keep saying it, uh, remember, that's what happened to this building, that's the story Mike had told us for years, that he started, they started putting a bunch of things in here and then decided, okay, nope, we don't have enough money for that. So now this building wasn't built big enough because of that, and they cut, they cut corners. So what I'm saying is, bottom line, do each of these projects, um, have the funding to do what we were supposed to do in the first place? And in the end, do we have to cut corners because, uh, we found out these budgets aren't meeting the expectation of what needs to be done in the buildings? That's all I'm asking. So if you have those broken down, you have the total amount we have, how much you've used? broken down, you have the total amount we have, how much you've used so far, and then you keep taking away from that and you show us this costs seventy seven, this is discretionary hundred and fifty. That's bottom line, to see what's happening with the buildings. It wouldn't be such a problem or it wouldn't be keep coming up if you could see some of those numbers somehow. You said there was a total amount, and I remember there was a total amount, but now we have seventy seven coming out, we have discretionary funding coming out. What is the total amount left? What is the total amount that the work needs to be done? I mean, you don't have to break down. I'm taking down pieces and parts of the building. I mean, it's discretionary funding on removing some of the equipment. I mean, I'm not saying multi multi or whatever you call it, however you say it. Try to detail everything to a certain extent, but the cash flow is more what I'm thinking of. So again, my thoughts, and I'll keep saying it. Do we have enough cash flow to finish and do what we were supposed to do to each building in the end? Or do we have to cut corners because we don't have enough funding? Because we had fifty two million, remember in discretionary or whatever, from forty five million, not discretionary, forty five million in bonding. We had ten from ARPA. We had another six from ARPA. We added another three from ARPA. What is the total amount that we have for funding still? Can we see that again? And what of those three categories is that money in that pot going to? And then when you spend it, it should show the the bottom line before the end. And you come back and say, we can't finish this. We have to do this because we don't have enough funding left in in this project. We're going to use some from the jail, or we're going to have to use some from the to finish concourse from across the street. That's all I'm asking is break it down so we can see it and the public can see it instead of us all guestimating from that, Kevin.
Yes, I've brought those presentations. I showed the budget, how it broke down. And so far, we haven't strayed from that. We are still within the confines of where we are. We're actually saving money on some of the projections that we had. I've mentioned that when we talked about funding for the Public Defender's Building and Operations Building. We had planned one point six million dollars. As I stated, we're only at four hundred and fifty thousand. So we're finding and realizing savings in other places. But the general overall budget, the buckets still kind of remain the same. We have eight point six million dollars allotted for the Public Defender and Operations Building and for nine hundred concourse. The more we save on the PDO building, the more we can apply towards the Public Defenders or the nine hundred concourse building. We also have money allotted for the revamping of this building and for the Public Safety Building. Those, depending on what departments are moving and how expensive we get in there, there was five point some million dollars in there. I don't see us really spending over one point two. So but until I get hard numbers on a lot of that, we still need to update. That's when we can actually update those numbers. So far, we still have taken our fifty two million. We've broken into the buckets for each building. I presented those budgets here. That it was all in a spreadsheet. It showed a range from point A to point B. BKV showed those numbers multiple times. This is still the process we're going through. And so.
So the seven point two, I thought it was seven. And the alternatives, did we have to vote? Did we have to vote on those to make it eight point six? Because I don't remember voting eight point six. All I remember is that if we wanted to do the alternatives or the whatever the others that we needed to vote to see if those were going to be done. So at this point now, we're at eight point six instead of the seven.
No, that's not what I said.
What did you say?
I said we're a little over six million for the building itself.
Right.
And it raises to seven point two with the three alternates that are included in the base bid.
So what was the what was the total when you just said eight point six? What raised that?
Six was also a combination of nine hundred concourse and the PDO building. So that's the amount budgeted for the remodel for nine hundred concourse and the Public Defender and Operations Building.
Huh, I guess I don't remember that. But I thought we did the one point six five was across the across the street and seven million was the total amount that was going to be.
So we have.
And you're at six million right now.
We have two projects.
And then you have discretionary funding that you're using of a hundred and fifty. That's why I said it's nice to see it broke down because before I thought it was seven million and then we're at seven point two. Is the seven point two with the PDO is what you're saying at this point, plus the three alternates? Maybe I'm not getting it.
So I think I think what I've heard is seven point two was was the budgeted for the PDO building. And right now, because it was at six with a one point two remodel cost, but right now you're at four hundred and fifty.
No. PDO across the street.
So.
That's why I'm that's why I'm saying, okay, here's the bottom line. It's not PDO. It was the was nine hundred concourse plus PDO. Kevin, my bottom line is, so we don't all get on a different page, let's have it a little bit more broke down again so we understand it, if you could please. That's all I'm asking.
We'll be happy to bring that budget forth once we get our bids.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskine.
I'm going to move to authorize Construction Manager Kevin Burton sign an authority to enter into a construction manager at risk contract AIA doc A one thirty three dash two zero one nine and AIA doc two oh one dash two zero one seven with Skull Construction for a fixed fee amount of seventy seven thousand.
Moved by Roskine, seconded by Drews. Mr. Laster.
Mr. Chair, I'm just going to make a recommendation moving forward. Anytime we bring something up here for us to review, it would probably be wise just to have that breakout so that there's no confusion on what's going where. Every single time, I mean, Excel spreadsheet showing it out and, you know, all you have to do is update it every time we add something to it or what's getting parceled out. That way we can, you know, we're not having to try to remember everything that's been talked about. It can be in front of us every single time. We can compare it to our previous notes. I think that's going to be beneficial so that we're not spending as much time on something like this. We can see it every time. So if you're bringing something for the concourse building, bringing something for the PDO building, whatever it is, just have that Excel spreadsheet so we can see how it's ticking out so that we don't keep having battles of saying, well, I thought it was eight million. I thought it was seven point two million. I thought it was six million. It'll keep us in being able to follow through with everything that's going on. I think that would be very beneficial, my opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
That's very reasonable.
Mr. Roskine.
So Kevin, wasn't two or three or maybe four meetings ago, I asked for a spreadsheet that we could sit there and say, this is what the building costs and this is where we're at. The only reason, and I think we've got that process started, but we just needed some hard numbers before we because we really didn't have any hard numbers at the time. And so I think we've already started that process, haven't we?
Yes, I have. I have an Excel spreadsheet. We have multiple versions of it. It it gets updated all the time as we realize more more refined costs. So IT infrastructure items to get networking and cameras and all of that kind of equipment out to nine hundred concourse. We're we're still working through all of that to identify that additional cost. We're we're working on, you know, just all of these different pieces and parts. So that Excel spreadsheet gets updated at least weekly, if not more. And so I really wanted to try to make sure we were bringing just real numbers instead of estimates or something that's changing all the time. Because now we can, once we get bids back, now we're kind of locked into those those bid scenarios where now those numbers aren't fluctuating all the time. Now we actually have bids and a hard scope. So apologize for not bringing, you know, more of that before you, but it would change all the time. So that was my rationale behind not doing it until we actually had bids.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
I don't mind if it changes, as long as we're getting updated information as you get it. Because if you print it for a meeting, and if there's a change to it after you've printed it for the meeting, to me, that doesn't matter. You've got a more refined number than the estimate that you gave us. I'm okay with that. But us being able to sit up here and not have to go through eight point six, seven point two, six million, three million, whatever the conversations is, I think is very important to have it laid out. So we don't have to go through that because we spend so much time every time talking through what may or what we thought or what we remembered. And I'm going to say it, I'm kind of old. So sometimes I forget things. And so I would rather have it laid out very easily for me to go through, yep, we did talk about that. Yep, that's checking out. Everything's looking good. Because if we don't, I'm going to get to a point where I'm like, well, discretionary spending for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, oh, that seems like it's a due cost for me. I might be voting no on some of those in the future because I want to see it start tracking out to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to and following the money the way we were supposed to because that's what we're charged with.
Good. Understood.
Here.
Ms. Haggar.
And Travis is right. It sounds like I'm against what you guys are doing with your discretionary or your seventy seven thousand. And I even said that it wasn't a big deal in a sense because it's something you need, but it is a big deal not being able to see where it fits in on the budget. So to push the numbers for an Excel sheet and change them because of those different discretionaries or stuff and then bring that forward, I I also agree. I think that's why we go back, Kevin, because I don't know. I don't know if it's, okay, it's six or seven. And you could say it four times, but whenever we had the paper, I remember before on B and G, it always had the numbers broke down or saying we're bidding on this, but this is what we have budgeted and where this fits in. So again, Travis is right. And that's basically where I was going, not to try to argue with you, but I'm trying to do a guess. And then I don't want to have to pull up ten different sheets that I've had in the last year because you know how many times those ten sheets have changed? Then I have to figure out which one in the end, are we going with this now because of the budget? Because it's true, we've had BKV, remember, and we've had different changes on those BKV. I'm trying to track it. So I agree, an Excel sheet or just a sheet that says each one or whatever you put on your paper, it makes it simplified. I remember Mike used to do it on his just to make sure we actually had it. Or I'd call him and say, can you put this on here? So I think Ron said he asked for it before. Travis has asked for it, and so have I. So like I said, it's not like you want to put a fight and these are bad things that you're putting forward. It's just nice. We are, that's our job is to make sure that the money is going where it's supposed to and that we don't don't end up with billions that are less than in the end because of funding. So thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskine.
Kevin, before we vote on this, can you just give the commission an overview of the responsibility and scope of work of a construction risk manager?
Sure. So they estimate the project through multiple phases. They help guide the path of constructibility and value engineering. So architects generally aren't builders. And so they understand the market somewhat, and they can understand some of the market savings, but they don't understand our niche market that's here in Rapid City. So bringing a local construction manager on board, they understand that precast may be cheaper in steel or vice versa. There's a shortage of block masons. So is it cheaper to do precast over block? They understand the market. They understand the subs, all of that kind of stuff. So they partner with us to help us find redesigns or things like that that actually save us money, time, material, those kind of things. We still end up with a great product at the end, but they'll partner with us to find any of those labor or cost savings and materials and and those kind of items. They also are professionals in the industry that bid these. So for budgeting purposes, if you have an engineer bid it, they use RS Means or something like that, which is a national program. They try to niche it to certain markets. But as we all know, Rapid City is kind of an island, five, five hours from any real metropolitan area. So we deal with the labor force that's kind of right here. And it's really hard for any national estimating firm to hit the nail on the head or any of that kind of stuff with our labor market. So bringing in that expert right off the get go that understands our market, understands the the material availability and all of those kind of things helps us get a lot more accurate estimating and budgets so that when we move forward, we have a lot better understanding of the cost versus just an engineer's estimate that traditionally have a plus or minus percentage of variability in those.
But they're not the contractor, but they have the potential to bid themselves throughout the process on different phases of the jail.
Yeah. So as a CMAR, they eventually morph into the role of general contractor, but they help. They bring on design assist contractors. So they can bring on electricians, HVAC contractors, block masons, all of those kind of things to help through the design process as well as themselves. So not only is it just the construction manager, but design assist from actually all the sub trades that come in so that we get that better pricing. And then they go out and they actually bid the entire project as it's designed once we hit construction documents, probably ninety percent level. They they receive all the sub bids. They do it all by South Dakota procurement rule. When they come in, they can self perform certain tasks, but they have to turn in a bid just like any other contractor. So then when they all come together, we take the best value in all of those bids received. We come up with a guaranteed maximum price. Included in that guaranteed maximum price is their general overhead, construction management for their subs on their project, all of those kind of pieces and parts. And then we would come here to actually award a guaranteed maximum price.
So that's where we'll have a finite number that we can decide what to do with.
Yep, we'll estimate it all the way through. We'll have a good understanding. Once we bid it all out, then we'll have a guaranteed maximum price. There is a contingency built into that on the contractor's side so that it is a guaranteed maximum price. The change orders or adding additional money to it would be very limited in scope. It would mainly be desired need from the owner to increase scope.
Thank you.
Mr. Drews.
So Kevin, I like what you originally proposed to us and what you continually remind us of is that you're having alternates built into these proposals that as it comes to us that we can be looking at the total dollars budgeted, total dollars that it would cost to do hundred percent of everything, including all the alternates. But alternates can be removed.
Yes, sir.
Bring us back towards closer to budget if it's over. So I like that suggestion you made early on. I continue to like it. Appreciate it.
Yes, and we will be looking at alternates with the jail. Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Look right. But we will be bringing in alternates with the jail. We've looked at security electronics. It's a major problem with the jail right now. We have doors showing unsecure. That's a little disheartening for the people that are in the jail that may have a offender that's behind a locked door that's not showing locked. So we've got some infrastructure items that we're including in this original jail package, but it will be bid as an alternate because we may not have the overall budget for it. We are also looking at potentially breaking the guaranteed maximum price into advanced bid packages. So there are some grants available for the new energy plant, ice storage, cooling, cooling chillers, piping, air handlers, that kind of stuff that all go along with cooling. So we have a meeting next week with with them to discuss getting that grant. We could save thirty five to forty percent, somewhere thirty to forty percent, somewhere in that range. We're not sure exactly yet on all the energy plant equipment other than boilers. So mainly be the cooling side. That's a federal grant. And so that would help us offset. Part of the caveat is that that has to be under construction by the end of the year. So under construction is potentially a signed contract with a contractor or approved funding through this commission. So we'll try to get advanced bid packages for those kind of things forward. But once again, it would be included in that overall budget of the jail. It would just be we're bidding this out early. We might be able to get some civil work done, the excavation, the demo, the new piping and that kind of stuff in the streets. So that's an advanced bid package. We're looking at getting the jail cells actually being built early. So if we can get just a corrections contractor. So most of your secure electronics, jail cell manufacturers and all those can have a jail cell manufacturer. Like all that, Mike?
Security or for cell box?
The security contractor. The just the security contractor. Yeah. So they have a security contractor that generally partners with cells, security electronics. It provides all the hardware, the things like that. They manage the installing of the cells. But we want to try to do an RFP, get them on board early so we can pick the right cell manufacturer and get those being built so that they're ready to deliver at the time that we have the shell up and ready to go.
I will say, getting back to the construction manager, I think.
I will say, getting back to the construction manager, I think, and what you'd said, Kevin, is very much true. You've got to have local availability. The difference between that and engineer's bids is a big difference. Construction manager has the feelers out in the area to know who to contact to bring in for certain prices and whatnot, but they have those contacts. And they also would know more on material coming in, because some stuff you have to order quite a bit earlier in order to be in the timeframe that needs to be done, because not all materials are readily available anymore. So getting that planned out is part of the construction manager's job to do all that and to make sure it's in a timely manner. I mean, you said precast, you described it well, so I appreciate that, but I think it's very important for the construction manager.
We do have motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Next two items are need no motion, therefore information, and then I'll recognize items from compensation committee, HR Director Carol Bancroft.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. And as we've approached the final stages within the wage study, that the compensation committee has been meeting twice a month, so that they could continue to oversee and review the progress of the wage study, which it is in its final stages. And we're at that last step within the wage study now, where we have the wage scale, which I have to give tremendous credit to Joe Miller and his staff, that they put together a tool that enables the department heads and elected officials to place their eight-hundred-plus individuals on the wage scale, to see as far as where they're going to be positioned and what the financial impact is, as well as being proactive about watching for any compression issues, et cetera, so that the exceptions that would need to come to the commissioners would be minimized significantly from what you've seen in the past. So this process of putting the eight-hundred-plus individuals on the wage scale and understanding where's the sweet spot for us, as far as what we would bring for a recommendation to the commissioners, that that's going to take about another three to four weeks in order to accomplish that. So the committee is respectfully requesting that the commission would support this timeframe, so that they can put those eight-hundred-plus individuals onto the wage scale, and that would enable us to come through with a recommendation on the final product, as far as making sure that it is fair, it's competitive, and it's sustainable, meaning that it would be well within the bounds of what the budget could afford. So adopting this request of extending that we would be able to bring that information forward in the July eighth and ninth meetings, that this is a recommendation. So I will come before you again next meeting with action request.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
Carol, did I hear that you said you were going to show an impact on the budget with the new and then show the previous, so we could see, have an idea what the impact going forward would be?
Yes, our intent is that we would show the commissioners, much like we've been during the working sessions, that show you as far as how we arrive at them, the number that we do, and then we can bring that to the July eighth and ninth meetings.
Mr. Chair. Carol, after we had our meeting, it was a good meeting, lots of good information. You said sending more questions to you via email. I submitted some questions to you, and then you said you'd like board approval. If we're going to answer those questions or spend time on those, I'd like to present those to the board to see if the board would like that data, because I think it's important data that I asked for, but Carol's saying that it may take some significant time to get that information.
I don't know what the questions are.
Well, that's what I was going to give out. I had asked her if we, as the board, specifically me at that particular time, but I think it should go to all of us, I'd like to see the turnover rate for each department the last two years, and to for us to be able to review the outgoing surveys, that was one. But two, of the counties that were utilized in the demonstration, I would like to see a comparative of the benefits paid out by the employee versus the employer. In other words, Pennington County pays out X towards X benefits, Minnehaha pays X towards X benefits, same with the other counties utilized. I think that'll give us a better overview of what the counties are paying, because I do know some counties, as I have done some research on this, they're paying higher hourly rates, but they're paying less for benefits. And the reason why they're paying higher hourly rates is because they're not paying as much into benefits. So I think that would be good information for us to have if we're going to make a final determination on this.
I was just, you know, on the fly, that's kind of hard to do right here. I'd probably put it on the next agenda.
Well, I wasn't asking for them to give that data right now, because I have to research for it. But the email I got back from Carol was, in regards to the information you requested, please present this to the board for their consensus. This is information that the board needs for their consideration of the wage scale. I got this Friday, and I was out of town, and I didn't read it until last night, when I got my email. That's the only reason why I'm bringing it this morning.
But are you agreeable, next meeting, we can have that discussion?
To have the discussion, to ask them to consider this information?
Yeah, because this is the first I've heard of it, and I'd like to know, get a little more information, what's all involved to get it done.
As long as we get to hear that information before we listen to the wage study final presentation, because I think it's going to be important information for the wage study. And I saw that the wage study, unless I'm reading this wrong, to understand we're pushing the wage study to be on the agenda the eighth and the ninth of July for consideration, not necessarily the fifth of June, because I'm seeing the fifth-
Right, the fifth of June is to approve the extension of time to July eighth and ninth to present it.
Yeah, as long as we can get the information for that. If we have to put it on the next agenda to approve that, I think those are some very important questions that we, to make an informed decision, we would need to answer.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
So when we ask questions, we have to bring them to the board to have consideration, if they have to be done. So if we're asking and we're having these meetings to talk about the wage scale, and everything has to come up through here, and then you make it to the next meeting, I don't see that with other things we do. I'm trying to figure out why you keep continuing stuff that is asked, and why we have to have a department head come up. I don't go to the departments. I go to them personally and ask them questions, and they get the information. I've never seen it like, okay, Travis has some information, Carol brings it up to the board, because, and then you're saying it doesn't have to be presented to the budget. Okay, that information isn't being hidden. What we're asking is, or not me, Travis is asking, is a question of a department head on wage scale. So you believe on July eighth and ninth, when the prelim's usually done by the end of July, that we're supposed to be able to look this up, meet with these departments, and figure out that this wage scale and how much it's going to cost and what it's doing is going to be okay done by July eighth? I've never seen budgets this late in my entire life. We have to look up all these departments, meet with all these departments, and figure it all out, and get the prelim done by July eighth. I've never seen it this late. I can't figure out why we're doing it late. I can see on the wage scale it might be, but why so late? Number two, I'm sorry, the job descriptions and stuff I thought were amazing, what you guys did. I am skeptical about wage comparables and market analysis because of what happened on exceptions last year. That cost us eight-hundred to a million dollars. And those exceptions weren't totaled as a certain amount. One of our commissioners did it for us. So now you're telling me that the same department heads, they've got exceptions from ten to, I don't know how much thousands, are now going to do a wage comparable and a market analysis without compression and disparity? I'm skeptical because of what I saw in the past. July sixth, it was all good for me, until I started wage exceptions behind the scenes and then coming out with totals that are unacceptable on eight-hundred to a million on the budget. Where did we get the eight-hundred million? Did everybody have that in their budgets to increase what those totals were? And at this point, how much will it cost us here? And are you going to cut your budgets in order to make this wage scale work? What are you going to cut in your budgets? Are we going to increase the budgets in order to add this new wage scale? I'm not discounting the work on it. I just, I guess, from what I've seen in the past, it's not working very well. It hasn't worked very well. And are we going to bring the wage scales of the study behind the scenes, like we did at the exceptions, and bring in an executive session, because there might be some disparities or compression? Why I'm saying that is not you personally. This has been going on with HR and what I've been in, in other cities and other city and county from the last ten years. So what is going to be different? What is going to be different is supposedly that's not going to happen. I can't see it not happening, where you have to bring more and more because of changes. I understand that. But are they going to be behind the scenes, or are they going to be up front?
So Commissioner Hancock, I'd like to answer some of those questions. One of the reasons that we were tasked with doing the wage study for 2025 is exactly what you were explaining, that in the past, we needed something different. And that is exactly what this group is producing, is something different, and making sure it's fair, competitive, and sustainable, and fits within the budgetary confinement, because we know we have only a finite amount of money that we can work with. The tool that Joe and his team have built is a what-if analysis tool. And so, you know, we can plug in as far as this is what we would like to recommend, but then we can see the financial impact and say, no, we've got to back it down. And in that entire process, we're working with the department heads and the elected officials to look at as far as any concerns they have about compression that the new wage scale may result in. And so we're addressing that upfront. I'm not going to guarantee that we wouldn't have some exceptions that would come forward, because it's a living, breathing organization that we have, and there are exceptions that do come up. So there will be still some, but nothing like what we have seen in the past, because the due diligence is being done upfront before it ever comes to the board. As far as the request that Commissioner Lester has, I respectfully understand why he's asking that. The reason that I asked him to bring it to the commission is because it's outside the scope of what this project that we were tasked with. And so that's why it's, if it's going to be part of the project, then we need to have the commissioners give us direction to do that. It isn't that we don't want to do it, it's just, please, give us within the scope that that is part of what you want to have. And so with that being said, you know, I think that the extension of bringing that to you on July eighth, the difference being, you're going to have a much better end result if we can go through the due diligence of getting all of that information correct when we bring it to you.
I have a follow-up.
Let me make a comment on this first, because, thank you very much for explaining that. It's not that you didn't want it, but it will be presented. And so, it does take part of the whole commission, so.
Okay, so when we did the wage scale, and we did it before it was done, and we gave all these exceptions on this wage scale, did it do due diligence upfront to do that? I don't think it did. From what I've seen from the budget changes and what has been presented, I don't think it did. I think the wage scale and what it's done for compression and disparity on some of the employees from watching that and listening to those employees I have, it didn't do due diligence for this county.
So are we speaking of the past? Are the current wage scale under the DBM Gallagher method, or the new one?
The new one, which you use for department heads, elected officials, and other people on exceptions, that you brought behind the scenes, which was voted on in executive session, brought out. That's not due diligence. Number two, finite money to work with. How much money did you know you were working with at the time when you started making wage exceptions, when we started making wage exceptions? That's not against the scope, because it's the financial impact has added over eight-hundred to a million dollars because of that wage scale wasn't finished. We decided to keep moving it forward. When me and Travis kept saying, stop, because we don't know the impact, but we did it anyway. We actually added elected and non-elected officials to it behind the scenes. So how does that justify financial impact and due diligence? It doesn't, Carol. I'm sorry. It had nothing to do with-
Commissioner Hancock, I have to disagree with you, that you're talking about the current wage scale, which that was implemented over three years ago, and there were a number of exceptions that were made with that. And I wasn't even here as a part of it at that point in time. And then there were still some exceptions that were still, when we had changeover in elected officials and department heads. But we're not talking about that today. Today, we're talking about the 2025 wage scale. And that's what we need to make sure that we can have three to four additional weeks in order to get everybody placed on it, so that we can understand.
And for clarification, just for clarification, the department head review was brought forward by you, Ms. Hancock, to have her do that.
Saying that, so I'm going to defend. Point of order, point of order. You told something that's not true. I said June sixth that we should bring it forward. Do you know, all departments plus Holly were one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand? I disagree with that. I saw that. No, it's my order right now. No, I'm not. You keep saying I agreed with it June sixth, and I made that point over. Yes, you did. You just did. And number two, that wage study has affected and was done for 2025 under wage exceptions for department and non-department officials. So tell the truth. Both of you, that 2025 wage scale was affected because that wage scale was done July, June sixth, that I thought was going to be good. You are out of order by not telling the truth.
I think we can move on. Let's move on with this.
Of course we can, because it was affected by the 2025 budget or 2024 budget that we are not addressing.
Six-five, 2024.
So you'll keep shutting me down every time I want to speak, Commissioner Le Corre.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, this brings us up to item number twenty-one, which is items for management group, Risk Manager Walter McDuff.
Walter. Commissioners, Pennington County Risk Manager Walter McDuff. What I bring for informational purposes to you today is for the bylaws for Threat Management Group. You guys stood Threat Management Group up March nineteenth, May fifteenth, the Threat Management Group met, went over the bylaws, were good with them. I bring them to you guys. I plan on bringing them to you on June fifth for adoption. With that, I stand for any questions.
Is there any questions for Walter?
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
Thank you, Walter. This was a long time coming, and it's something that we had discussed with EMS a long time ago, and I'm glad you brought it forward again. It's going to be a huge difference in case of emergency in Pennington County and the different departments, so kudos to you, sir.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. It's also the group.
Okay. Any further questions for Walter? There's no motion necessary.
Okay.
Thanks, Walter. Next, we comes up item number twenty-two. This is items for the public, STCL 125-1. Speaker request forms required. This is a time for members of the public to discuss expressed concerns to the Board of Commissioners on policies and issues affecting county government and its functions. Action will not be taken during this item on any issue brought forth that are not properly noted. Speakers under this item will be recorded in the minutes by name of area of interest. I have no speaker request forms. So I'd move, look for a motion to take a recess for planning to set up the computer. I'd look for a motion to take a ten-minute recess.
So move.
Moved by Lester, seconded by Roskinet. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Look to, motion to come back in the session.
So move.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinet. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Look for a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
So move. Say it.
Moved by Roskinet, seconded by Lester. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now in the Board of Adjustments hearing. Item number eight. Cody.
Cody Saka, Red Mill Pinner. Item A is variance COVA 24-0003. It's to allow a detached structure, a garage, to be located in the front yard on a lot consisting less than one acre in size of the applicant landowners, Michael and Joe Allen. The applicants didn't actually send out their notification letters that are required, so staff is recommending to continue variance COVA 24-003 to the June fifth Board of Adjustment meeting.
So move.
Say it.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lester to continue to the June fifth- Moved by Drews, seconded by Lester to continue to the June 5th Board of Adjustment meeting. Any comments? Saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, Cody.
Item B is variance COVA 24-0004. It's to allow a detached structure, a garage, to be located in the front yard on a lot consisting less than one acre in size. The applicant and landowners, Ryan and Crystal Krantz. He is in the audience if there are any questions. The location of the property is 23066 Thunderhead Falls Road. Involves 0.8 acres. Current zoning is rural residential district. Existing land use is residential. Access is off Thunderhead Falls Road and there is a special flood hazard area on the property, the floodway. When looking at variance, we take a two-pronged approach. For prong number one, whether granting the variance comes counter to public interest, it does not appear that the request would be counter to public interest. And for prong number two, whether your special condition exists to grant a variance, staff did find that there is a special condition that exists on the property. Approximately half of the property is located in the floodway. Construction of any kind should be avoided in the floodway. And as you can see from the floodplain map, everything on the side and the rear where he could build a garage and still meet the requirements is in the floodway. Currently on the property, there's a single-family residence. This was rather off our near department review. The county certified floodplain manager said that the location of the proposed garage is located within the 500-year floodplain. This is not required floodplain development permit. The majority of the property is in the regulated floodway. Not allowing this variance would mean the applicant have to try to build within the floodway, which could create safety concerns. None of their objections or concerns were received. The applicants are proposing to build a 30-by-40 detached garage. The buildable area on the property is in the front yard or in the floodway. Again, we want to avoid the floodway. So with that, staff is recommending approval of variance VA 24-04 as there is a special condition that exists on the property that would create a hardship and staff would recommend three conditions be included.
That'd be my motion. Per staff recommendation.
Moved by Hickok to approve the recommendations of variance COVA 24-0004 with the three conditions. As there is special conditions exist in the property that create a hardship. Seconded by Lester. Any discussion? Saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Cody. Item C.
Megan Talmadge Planner, excuse me.
Oh, go ahead.
Agenda item C is a request for a zoning ordinance variance application to be submitted. The applicant, Juan Madius, is requesting that the Board of Commissioners direct the planning department to accept the applicant's variance application to allow more than 40 dwelling units on a dead-end road system. If subdividing in an area with more than 40 units on a road system with only one means of ingress and egress, ingress and egress of variance is required. The applicant submitted a layout plan on April 30th. And after viewing the supporting documentation, Stone Ridge Road, which leads down to the applicant's property, is only a 20-foot wide easement. And currently, there are approximately 60 dwellings on this dead-end road system, which includes Hart Ranch Road and Clydesdale Road. Staff recommends to deny the request to direct the planning department to take in the variance request to allow more than 40 dwelling units on a dead-end road system. As no special conditions exist on the property, that would not, that would excuse literal enforcement of the Pennington County zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Megan. Is there any questions for Megan?
Sure.
Mr. Drews.
So Megan, do you know how many lots are actually exist in that subdivision? Buildable lots?
There are about 80 lots in, on this dead-end road system. Just on Stone Ridge Road, I believe that there are six to seven on that 20-foot, that 20-foot easement.
Chair.
Are you done, Gary?
Yep.
Ms. Hickok.
So Megan, on these roads, is there a health, safety, and welfare where, well, health and safety, where people couldn't get out in this area? Because there's nowhere else for them to go. Is there like a cliff? Is there something where if we basically approved it, that these people would be at this point devastated by a fire or a flood because they couldn't get out?
The main concern is the amount of people that would need to get out. The amount of vehicles that would be leaving on that single Hart Ranch Road coming in from all of those neighborhood streets. And then I know that past, I believe past where Clydesdale reaches or intersects with Hart Ranch Road, a lot of that is gravel road. That may or may not meet ordinance 14 standards.
And I don't know if you know this, but how many times is it stifled with, maybe Brittany, you can answer it, or Jason, by a 40-unit rule because that road, if, if development kept going, that it could be developed where a lot of these guys are getting or women are being shut down because that 40-unit rule, because someone won't sell them their land for that, that parcel in order to do that second access. So I know it's health and safety. I already knew that before I asked, but bottom line is like some of them, are we stifling development by doing this and how do we make a difference? I know we've been trying to do this for a while, but we have to keep denying every 40-unit that you rule that comes up. And I know there's a lot of areas that are over 40 units that are functioning. That doesn't make it right. But how do we move it forward so people can actually do their developments on these lands?
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Muller, Planning Director. With this specific request, there was some concerns because Stone Ridge Road is only a 20-foot wide easement and the road itself is only eight to 10 feet wide. There has been some history on Stone Ridge Road. There was a neighbor that has voiced some concerns about the ingress and egress here because there is a approved conditional use permit for a B and B on that road and also a, a camp, like a summer camp or a church camp. So there was already kind of significant use on the road that doesn't even meet the requirements. So we look at these all on a case-by-case basis. And that was the biggest concern from our office on that Stone Ridge Road because there has been concerns with that road from the road district. The easement is only 20 feet. It needs to be 40 feet and the road width doesn't allow even vehicles to pass. So that was some of the concern with the denial on this specific one.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And I think that's what we're having to do is do it case by case for just health and safety. And that explanation was good, but it just, it drives me nuts on the 40-unit rule of how we have to pick and choose. And I don't think we could almost do it any other way. Because like Thunderhead Falls, those areas and other areas that have only one part and it's sheer cliff and other areas, I understand, but it's just, yeah. It baffles me what to do in order to help people to do their developments past that 40 units and still let them use their land for what they, they need to use it for, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinet.
So to put this in perspective, where this property is located would be about 2,500 feet south of those four 10-acre lots that we hashed over during the assessment appeal. And at that time, I believe the county was taking such a position on those 10-acre lots that that, that access was pretty equivalent. Was, you know, they didn't discount that access. So if these folks could build on this and they wanted to get out, they'd go north and then they had hit, what's the name of it? Because up on top, that is the Nettio Road, right? That's a two-lane paved county highway. So I'm assuming the reason they want to, they want to build a home on this property, right?
There is an existing residence on this property, but they want to subdivide it into a second property, which will have another residence on it.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
You want to hear?
I'd like to listen to the applicant.
Is there any more questions for Megan at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Before I call up the applicant?
I do have one.
Okay, I'm going to let him speak and then I'll call the applicant up. Mr. Lester.
Did I hear you say, how many units are already plotted and built on this area?
Dwelling units, there is somewhere between 60 and 70.
60 and 70.
Yep, with lots, which will be touched on on the next item, there's about 80 lots.
And Mr. Chair, that he's only wanting, they're only wanting to subdivide this into two parcels. Okay, I thought Commissioner Drews' question was, how many did he want to parcel this out into? I thought that's what your question was, but maybe I misunderstood. Because I heard the 80, but I thought it was just that 10 acres. So thank you for the clarification.
With that, I'll let Juan Mathis. If you want to come forward, please. I think Mr. Roskinet has a question for you. And this is your time to express your feelings on the project. The project.
Thanks for hearing me out. So I understand, yeah, everything has to do with health and safety. That's our primary concern. That's why these rules are established, which is super respectable. There are things that we are doing to mitigate some of these risks. We are approaching the neighbors to the south so that we can get an emergency easement, emergency use, only easement. That way we can egress through the south and then that goes through Amber. And then it still comes back up, which that one is still a dead-end road, but it's in, but it's a different form of egress. I've also been in contact, I've had some conversation with Lieutenant Eric O'Connor at the Fire Department and to establish a fire mitigation plan for this property. Again, these rules are meant for, they're there for a reason. So we want to do everything we can so that not only are we getting our plan approved to subdivide, but also that we're being safe on our property, that we're not, that if a fire comes through, everything is safe. So yeah, we want to subdivide into two 10-acre lots, have the emergency egress to the south. If the concern also is that for, for the B and B and the, the other situation occurring on that property, there are, there is talks of, because there are existing covenants on this. There are talks of changing the covenants to disallow B and Bs on any of, of Stone Ridge Road. And this is all part of the road district, which does have, I guess, the right to expand that road and, and make it better. So, so that, that would all be in the works. That, that would be all plans that I would work towards so that even if, let's say, even if this is approved, I wouldn't just give up right there. I would still work to make this a safe property so that everybody has proper ingress and egress.
Chair.
Mr. Roskinet was next in line.
Sir, how long have you owned this, what is it, 20 acres roughly?
It's 20 acres, correct. And only a month, if, if that. So yeah.
Okay, so. The intent is to subdivide it and then sell half or?
No, sir, we wouldn't sell it right away. We, we intend to subdivide it. And the, the main reason is we want to build a new residence. So the existing house on it that's right now, it's about 1,900 square feet. And we're a family of five, so we want to build a new house over the next year or so. And then we want to be able to keep the existing property. And it'd be great to have it, family stay over or whatever. And again, the HOA would still disallow B and B. So we wouldn't rent it out. We wouldn't do any of that. It would still be in our possession. But many years down the road, we see the value of, let's say, 10, 20 years. Whenever we're ready to sell, I mean, who knows when that'll be? Then we can, we have two properties that we can sell as opposed to just one house and then one accessory structure.
When was the existing house built?
1983.
Done?
Yep.
Ms. Hickok.
Thank you. So Juan, the emergency easement egress, have you talked to the planning staff about this? And what was the discussion if you did?
I did, yeah, and they were super helpful. They, and your question is, have I discussed it or what, what would be, what would it look like?
Well, why I mean that is they're saying there's not a second egress out of it. Brittany, do you have the information that he's talking about? Megan, sorry, Megan. And does that count if he gets that easement as a second egress?
Megan Talmadge Planner, it is something that we take into consideration if that emergency access was there. But currently, it's not in place, so it's not something that we consider.
Okay, so Juan, what I'd ask you is get the emergency easement in place. And I think your chances of getting that 40-unit rule and that second access for the planning department, I'm not going to guarantee that they would agree with that. But I think today with the 40-unit rule, based on, you know, other units being there and stuff, it would be hard for me to vote for it today. So with emergency easement, I think it would ease a lot of problems that you're having with the second egress and getting your property properly passed.
Subdivided.
Thank you, Juan.
Wonderful.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinet.
So could we deny without prejudice and give him time to work some, some type of emergency egress, that there'd be some documentation or whatever to, this way we're, we're not denying it. If we deny without prejudice, I think you get one year to bring us a little more information so that we got a comfort level to approve this.
Right.
So, sorry. This request isn't a variance request. It's a request for us to take in the variance. I'm not sure if we can attach conditions to that or deny it without prejudice.
Can we?
It would just be a denial, it sounds like. And then when he had that in place, he could come back in. And like I said, at that point, we would consider if he had the emergency ingress or egress.
Chair.
Ms. Hickok.
So I'd ask if we denied, does he have to pay again to bring it forward?
He hasn't paid anything right now.
At this point?
Yes.
Okay, so can you explain to us and Juan basically what he needs to do for the next steps in order to do what Commissioner Roskinet just said?
So you would need to have that emergency egress in place. You would come back to our office with that paperwork that had been filed with Register of Deeds. And probably we would need to have a conversation with the fire marshal also regarding that. There couldn't be any obstructions in that, so it would need to be cleared. And at that point, we can say that you do have that proper egress in place. And at that point, we can take it in.
Right. You agree with him?
Yeah, and, and the, the main, I also want to just get the opinion of the board too is if, when that, when the actual subdivision proposal comes through and you see, and, and there is an in-place emergency egress easement, there's a fire mitigation plan and we're only subdividing into two lots. So it's a favorable, I know you can't state right now because you can't, you don't have all the information in front of you, but that is a favorable circumstance to allow such a variance. Is that the, the opinion of the board?
From what you heard from the board is that's one, one of the things that they'd like to see before they make a decision.
Okay.
For health and safety.
I believe if that was in place, I would totally support what you're trying to do. We're just asking to take one more step to just provide the commission with a comfort level that there was an incident, that there'd be a second means of egress from the property.
Right.
So just a quick correction. If that emergency egress was in place, he actually wouldn't need a variance.
Nice.
Okay, so.
So he wouldn't need to come back.
Right.
Oh.
Okay.
He, he still would need a subdivision regulation variance for the road width. But the zoning ordinance variance would not be needed.
Okay.
Chair.
Ms. Hickok.
So I'll deny so he can, per staff recommendation, so he can follow through with the next steps.
Say it.
Wonderful.
Motion was moved to deny by Hickok, seconded by, was it Lester? Lester, any further discussion? Saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D is, Juan, you just will stay up here, Juan. I don't know if you want to.
So item D is the, we have the same wording in our zoning ordinance as we do in our subdivision regulations regarding lots rather than dwelling units. So this is the same situation, but it's with lots. And there are approximately 80 lots on this dead-end road system. Again, we recommend to deny the request as there's no special conditions that exist on the property.
So Megan, this falls underneath the same precedence as the previous one.
Yes.
Chair.
Ms. Hickok.
So same thing, staff recommends denial, I agree. And then staff will be working with Juan to move forward on his property so he can try to get it done, so. Thank you.
So you have motion to deny, Ms. Hickok?
Yes, sir.
Say it.
Moved to deny by Hickok, seconded by Lester. Any further discussion? Saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Hopefully that helps you out, Juan. You know what you need to, to do. Thank you, sir.
It does, very helpful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chair, I move adjourn to the, adjourn as the Board of Adjustment, reconvene as the Board of Commissioners.
Moved by Drew, seconded by Roskin to adjourn Board of Adjustments. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Brittany.
The consent agenda, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following three items. Item E is Plan Unit Development Overlay Review, PUR 22-17 for David Allard. And the Planning Commission recommended approval of PU 22-17 with 13 conditions. Item F is Preliminary Plan COPPL 24-0007 for Keystone Adventures, Inc. And Planning Commission recommended approval of COPPL 24-0007 with six conditions. And finally, item G is Preliminary Plan COPPL 24-0008 for Sunquist LLC, Rob Hammerquist. And Planning Commission recommended approval of COPPL 24-0008 with eight conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. At this time, is there any member of the public who wish to have any items removed from the planning consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any commissioners who wish to have any items from the consent agenda removed for further discussion?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the planning and zoning consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Roskin, seconded by Drews to approve consent agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next we come to regular agenda items. In the following planning and zoning matters in our uncontested hearings are those which planning department has not yet received or provided comments contesting the items. The documents for each item have been reviewed by the commission and decisions during these hearings will be based on the information provided in the packet and short presentation. If we receive comments contesting the items, the matter will be addressed in the same manner as a contested hearing.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thindson, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item H is Major Plan Unit Development Amendment, PU 94-02, to amend the existing planned unit development for a change in lot arrangement. The applicant is Little Guys LLC, Powder House Lodge. Ben Brink is the agent. Site location is 24125 Highway 16A. It's currently zoned planned unit development. Access is off Highway 16A, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Just kind of like the description of the request is, this is the previous lot configuration. And this is what they have changed it to. That was under, that was done under Minor Platt 22-12 in order to create lots one and two of Powder House subdivision. Condition number four of that stated that they'd have to come back and get a major PUD amendment for the change in lot line configurations. At that time, they also did submit a list of new requested uses in the PUD. All of those seem to fit what was already approved with the exception of ATV, UTV rentals. I did add a condition of approval in there stating that they'd have to come back for another review of this PUD if they ever pursue those operations, just so we can account for the fueling, maintenance, parking, and that sort of thing for those operations. So with that, staff recommends approval of my major planned unit development amendment, amendment 94-02 with conditions.
Thank you, Jason. Is there any questions for Jason?
So moved.
Begging.
Moved by Hagcock to approve PU 9402 with 24 conditions and seconded by Lester. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Brings us up to item I.
Good morning, Kelsey Rausch, planner. Item I is a refund request for a property on River View Court. The property owner finished space in a garage into, so in an attached garage, so it ended up being a multifamily dwelling unit. He did receive and approve CUP in January. He did end up having to get a building permit after the fact for the finished space in the garage. We did include a penalty fee because it was done after the fact. He is now requesting his penalty fees to be returned to him in the amount of $334. Staff recommends denial of the refund request of $334. As the property owner stated in 2017 that the proposed attached garage would only be used as storage, a man cave, and then there was a bathroom included. The total square footage was permitted as garage space, not finished space. And the applicant is here if you have questions for him.
Thank you, Kelsey. Is there any questions for Kelsey before I call up the applicant? None. Rod Cassidy. Rod, this is your time to explain the process of what happened at your side.
Okay, well, thank you. Kelsey's been great to work with. I just want to point that out to this point, so I have no qualms with her. So this was all going to be put to bed in 2021, May of 2021. And I had to have a septic tank or septic system permit reissued. So we had the tank pumped and the receipt went to the commissioner, or not, I'm sorry, the commissioner of zoning and planning. And they determined that I had a 1,000-gallon tank and that would not, is not sufficient for the property for the number of rooms I have. Well, initially, we thought we had a 1,500-gallon tank, which we got that idea from planning and zoning because that's what they provided us. They also provided us with a, what was it, not, a hand-drawn description of the septic system that was there already. So like I said, this was going to be put to bed in 21 of May. And then I had to redo my septic system. And of course, that was in the middle of COVID, so that took some time. We went to the state to get a variance from the state on the property line to expand the septic field. That took four months for a denial. We finally got approved and got it in. We spent over $10,000 trying to come into compliance with this, with the county. Unfortunately, when the building was built, it was built oversized and we recognized that and we agreed to pay that penalty, or not that penalty, but the additional tax on them. And the reason why, this was designed to be a man cave. However, circumstances dictated that later, a couple of years down the road, my wife's mom developed some health issues. And we needed to be close to her because of the issue she was having. She's grown in age. She can't climb stairs very well, and that's the only way into the upper level of our home, to which we had rooms later for her. So that's why this became a residence for her. So if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer, but otherwise, I'll just let you guys decide.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
Did you know you submitted a document that said that this would not be used as living quarters?
Yes, I signed it. Yep.
That's it.
Chair. So I feel bad that you had to, you know, move forward in the sense that your mom and you needed some help with living space for her. But based on the process, that's why I believe Commissioner Lester asked you, that you knew it wasn't going to be a living space. And at that time, should it came in for, to make it a living space for her and not a, basically a man cave. So with that, I would probably have to charge it to 334.
I would like to point one thing out before you decide. So in the bottom of the letter that Kelsey says, she says that they recommend denial of the request of 334 for the property because of what I said in 2017. But she also said the total square footage of the structure was permitted for garage and not finished space. I don't see what that has to do with the, the total square foot of the garage, of the space was accounted for. It seems to me they want this penalty out of spite. Because we, this is one of the big arguments we've had over the whole time. First of all, the size of it has never changed, and now we're paying for a second. We keep getting charged here and here and here and here. It seems like that's all we do. Every time we turn around, we have another penalty or something else we have to pay. And to me, it seems like planning and zoning wants this out of spite.
Okay, so I'll, I'll say something about that. So you said it was going to be a man cave, and now it's a living space, which they're not being spiteful, they're doing their job. And when it became a living space, they had to follow through that it wasn't. So what they did is the property owner, it says right here, Rapid Broadcast fee, paid 793 for the building permit, 125 for the inspection fee, 334 for the building permit for unpermitted square footage, and the 334 for penalty fee as a space was permitted as a garage square footage, not as a finished living space. So they weren't changing anything. What they did is, like anybody else, you went from a man cave to a living space, and they're only doing their job. They're not trying to be spiteful. That's just the rules and regulations. Once you change something, sir, it has to go based on that rule. I don't know what the commission will find today at the 334, but again, did you not know? Maybe you didn't know the rule, I don't know. Maybe you did. On the living space, once you changed it from a man cave to a living space, then it would be different. Because I thought we had that discussion up here when you were turning it into a man cave, that if it was a living space, especially with our staff, they usually will have an explanation. Well, Rod, are you using this for a living space or a man cave? And you would say man cave, so they would write down man cave. And now you've changed that, saying that they, that they're doing it because of spite, but that doesn't sound spiteful if they're trying to figure out which one you used it for. And you use it for a man cave first, and now a living space, so you have to basically come in and get that permit to make sure it's living space. And 334 for a penalty, to have your mom live there and do the right thing by your mom and the square, basically turn it into a man cave and a, from a man cave to a living space. I think they were being pretty nice about what they just did with the 334 and tried to help you through the process. So I don't think that's spiteful, sir. I think they're trying to do their job and do it right. So that's just my opinion, sir. But I'm thankful that you're helping your mother.
Well, I'm respectful of your opinion.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Rod, how long has it been since I've been to your house?
Three years.
And when I was there, there was other issues, it seems to me, not this one. But it seemed like you were just having all kinds of different issues trying to get done what you were trying to do. And if I recall, it was, the garage wasn't attached to the house or something like that.
You know, sitting here today, I see people getting, when we put this in, I was told that the garage had to be attached to the house because the garage couldn't be in the front yard. Yet today I sit here and I see two people getting variances to have an detached garage put in their front yard of their house. There were a lot of difficulties in getting this done. I felt it was way harder than it should be. But I do understand that these folks have the job, and they probably have people who try and cheat it and over, you know, get over the system. However, as I said, back in 2021, this should have been put to bed. This would have been put to bed in 2021 had they not come back and said my septic system wasn't big enough, in which that was the information they supplied to me when we came before, or we submitted the building application.
Mr. Chair.
Well, and I tend to agree, and that's why I'm going to support the refund. Because I just think this thing got really too complicated, complicated enough that I actually had to go up there and visit with you. And it seemed like it just never, I mean, I don't have that file in front of me, but I got a file with your name. And you don't know how many emails and how much time I've spent trying to get you through this process, and I'm sorry it's been so time-consuming. And I don't know, I don't have a problem with the refund myself.
Mr. Chair. I got Mr. Lester next. Cody, I looked like you want to make a comment before I go to Lester?
So Chris, seconded by Mr. Flinners, as somebody who deals with septics, the reason why the septic's required in 2021 and not in 2017, a man cave with no bedrooms doesn't require any septic. Whether you go to the bathroom in that bathroom in the garage or the bathroom in the house, it's the same amount of people. Second, you put a bedroom in there, you're classified by the state as having, being able to have two people living in there. There's an extra person in there, your septic has to meet the requirements then at that point to get the building permit.
Thank you for the clarification. Mr. Lester.
Rod, I just have a question about the document you said you were given by the planning and zoning or the county or whoever it was that you stated. Do you have that document so we can see what they handed you?
Which document are you referring to?
Well, the document that you stated in your presentation about you were given a document that said that your septic was 1,500.
Oh, you know, I don't, that would have been in the original building permit, I believe, and I do not have that. But again, I know at the time that we issued or applied for the building permit, there was a bathroom in the blueprints for the, for that to be taken into account with the septic system. And that was something that was taken into account.
Mr. Chair, I guess if I'm using that in my defense, I would have that evidence here to show that this is what I received. So we can be verifying that, okay, maybe you got erroneous data. I mean, yes, we do sometimes have erroneous data, but it's usually what's submitted to us, not necessarily because we went out and got erroneous data.
Well, and I believe that this data was probably submitted back when the house was made in the 60s, I believe it was the late 60s, and that nobody probably actually knew. However, again, I, this was my first time on a septic system, so I was kind of learning how it was going. I didn't really even know how a septic system worked until I moved into this home. And then I learned how a septic system works.
Just one final comment, Mr. Chair. I understand, but I probably still would have brought that document, say, see, this is what I got. I kind of had a little more understanding that maybe you got bad information, so you thought that it did meet the criteria. But if I don't have that evidence, then it's hard for me to say, well, did he really get bad information? Or did he just misunderstand what was stated? Maybe you misunderstood that they said you needed a 1,500-gallon tank rather than you have a 1,000-gallon tank. Does that make sense?
It does, however, I guess I don't have it with me, so I'm just going to leave it at that.
Okay. My comment, sir, is you're right, you probably gathered some data from planning staff because that's what they have. I've been down this situation. The only information I had on a septic system was what I can find from them, and they do the best of what's provided from them. As you said, it was, you gathered it from them. And so it may not be accurate, but it's pretty much nobody's fault. I mean, it falls on the property owner because you're ultimately the property owner and getting it checked and so forth. So that's my thought on that. I believe the man cave was probably your originally intent, and as a man cave, it's finished up. And as Cody said, you know, it's the same bathrooms because you have a bathroom in there, same amount of people. But once you, once you turn it into overnight people living there, that changes the whole spectrum of things. And that's where I come from because they're absolutely right. And it's unfortunate that you thought you had a 15, and so you cost you more money, 10,000, but you're all up to code now. And in the end, but I'm leaning more towards the staff's side because quite frankly, when it is changing into a living, living space, that really does change their dynamics because it's going to be an accessory dwelling that this commission worked hard to allow in neighborhoods for the exact reason you're using it for, you know. So they, this commission has worked hard on getting that approved in neighborhoods. So that's where I'm at on it. I think it's a lot longer process, but I think that you went through, but I think a lot of it had to do with the septic and then just multiple things happened after that, so.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
So I agree, because once you change the use, then you started a new process. So it gets complicated because first you didn't need the extra septic. Then once you put a living space, you change the use, which changes the septic, which changes the rules. So, yeah, it gets complicated, but if you do that before you make it into a living space, I think it makes it less complicated. But if you bring it in after, then it's complicated because you're trying to go back and go, okay, now I don't have enough septic. My living space should have been done before and should have looked at the septic before. So I'll just tell you, the staff is pretty thorough. It's that change of use that probably you just went, okay, got to go through this process again to make it right. And that's, I'll keep saying, it's their job. And that's, I'll keep saying, it's their job and it's what they do. They're not trying to make it complicated. But no offense, but when you brought something else different, that's what made it complicated and it complicated the situation. Because you had to increase septic, you had to change the use, you had to come in for a different building permit. I keep telling people, it's probably best, and I appreciate the staff, because I have to go out and look at a lot of this stuff with them. And then we explain ahead of time, instead of having to come in and explain it sometimes, and either way is good. But once you change the process of what you're doing, once you know you had a building permit the first time, the second time, once you change the use, it changed everything. So it made it more complicated, because the use should have probably been brought in and then they would have said, okay, sir, this is what's going to happen. And maybe you would have changed how you did some of the stuff on your property as well. So that's part of their job is to help you through that process. So I think it goes both ways there a little bit. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
Rod, I'm guessing you're not here because you need three hundred and thirty-four dollars.
No, sir.
You feel that the process could have been done better and it's more the principle and not the monetary.
It's the principle and it's the fact that every time I turn around, there's another fee. When I went to do this, then I had to get a permit for the plumbing from the state. And then I had to pay the inspector to come out. Every time we turn around, I write another check to somebody. And I'd say it's just ridiculous. This process shouldn't be this difficult. I mean, the building was there, a lot of these fees shouldn't have been incurred because the building was there. It's been there five plus years now. I shouldn't have had to bring out a state inspector for the plumbing. I shouldn't have had to bring out an inspector for the electrical. It's been done for five years. I mean, I just think, I've incurring fees and I'm incurring fees and it's just frustrating. I think that to this point, you know, today is, we're going to have a finale today, good or bad for me. It's fine, that's what we're here for. But if maybe in the future it changes the process and makes it a little less frustrating for the citizen, and we can get rid of some of these ridiculous fees, maybe then that in the end will be just enough for me.
Thank you, thank you, Rod. Any more questions for the applicant? If not, I'd go to the board.
I want to make a motion to deny.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock and seconded by Lassiter to deny refund of the penalty fee. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
I do have to agree with you, Rod, in some aspects about all the ridiculous fees. I'm in the process of doing stuff. I have to get the state electrical inspector, write them a check for something that my son, who's an electrician, can already just do, but we still have to submit the application and all that kind of stuff. That's the process that we have. I'd encourage you to be involved with those processes if you want to make changes. Don't come whenever it's impacting you. Be ahead of it, pay attention to what goes on in Pierre, pay attention to what goes on in the county commission, every time we have a meeting, so that you can be involved at that level early on, not just when it negatively impacts you.
You might agree to that.
Nope, that's the reason why I got involved.
My final comment, sir, is when it goes from a man cave to residential, yes, there is additional public safety concerns that need to be inspected compared to when you first built it. So that's living quarters, you know, whether you're renting it out to somebody or something, they got to be up to code and be checked and certified before they do it. So I understand your frustration with it, but just because it's existing doesn't mean it was done right. With that, I'll go to the board for a vote. All in favor of the denial, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed.
Nay.
Motion carries with one no.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for coming up.
Item J.
Good morning, Commissioners, again. Brittany Mollater, Planning Director. Item J is Public Hearing of Ordinance Amendment OA twenty-four dash zero five for Pennington County to amend Section three twelve signs, billboards, and other advertising structures. This ordinance amendment was brought forward, there was a Supreme Court case in two thousand and fifteen for Reed versus Gilbert. It had to do with content neutrality of signs. Our current ordinance does not meet that requirement. So this section of the ordinance was rewritten to be in conformance with that Supreme Court case from two thousand and fifteen. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this, they did not make any changes. So that is staff's recommendation.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
Legals already looked over it and they concur.
Yes.
I mean, I'm just asking.
Yes.
I feel sorry for you having to read through that court case.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
Brittany, can you just highlight some of the changes that were made where this is different than the original? Just.
There isn't too many differences, except for we can't distinguish between certain types of signs based on content. So our other ordinance had, you know, a differentiation between maybe a political sign is allowed in certain instances where another sign is not, we can't differentiate. We can only regulate location, size, and type, essentially. We can't, anything that's said on it, what it says, we cannot regulate that in any way, unless it's any kind of profanity or pornography, obviously. But other than that, there is no other content that we can regulate. So basically, it can be said. So this only requires a sign, if you place a sign for your business, it's the same fee. And you can change, and it does clarify some things on this one. So if you're changing a face on an existing sign, you don't have to get a permit for it. So once you get the permit for the structure and the sign, you know, you can change the face. It's like a billboard type of thing. There are some setback requirements, obviously, in here that are still similar. Alighted sign still requires a conditional use permit. Alighted sign within fifteen hundred feet of a residential, you know, requires some permits. But other than that, it's just based on content neutrality.
So is there something that regulates the actual construction of the sign?
It can only be thirty feet high, I believe, so it's just height.
But it can be wood, steel?
Correct.
Starboard.
Well, it needs to be anchored, but yes.
Yeah. I see a sign on the corner of China Gulch and Highway three eighty-five. It's like a four by eight and it's, I think it's like in a residential neighborhood. And I haven't seen any, it was, you know, it's been constructed, but I, last time I drove by it, there wasn't any face on it. But would that particular sign need to be permitted?
Is it the one for the propane? I believe that is in Hill City City Limits.
It would be next to the propane place, but not on the propane place.
Right. I do know the propane is in city limits, I would have to look to see if that parcel's in city limits. If it does, it would need a permit. If it's.
I'm just saying it doesn't look that well constructed to me, and I just didn't know it was going to be a campaign sign, but it looks like it's there this day. So now my question would be, if it is there, it would need to be permitted if it's a four by eight?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's going to be a permanent sign.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash oh five.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Hagcock. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Item K.
Right. Item K is Public Hearing of Ordinance Amendment OA twenty-four dash zero three for Pennington County to amend Section three nineteen, the vacation home rental. And this was continued from the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting. This is the ordinance amendment that was put together. The Planning Commission did make some minor changes to it. The biggest change with Section three nineteen is now it's a licensing procedure in lieu of a conditional use permit procedure. There are some basic standards to meet it. It is an administrative review process. It is a licensing requirement every three years. I'm thinking, I'm just trying to look at. The Planning Commission did make some minor changes to the staff's proposal. They did not change the fee requirements. They did change this definition to a unit in here, so it would allow that in apartment or condo type buildings. It does allow vacation home rentals in ADUs. So if this does pass today, we will have to change our section on ADUs to allow vacation home rentals in that ADU portion of the ordinance as well.
Mr. Chair.
I'll just note that I'll be facilitating the conversations, but I'll be abstaining.
I don't think you can do both.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So I still have an issue with item C, recreational vehicles, I'm sorry, it's three, D, three, C. Recreational vehicles, VHRs are prohibited in recreational vehicles. Darren Sturgis, can someone rent their recreational vehicle on their property if they have all the connections and all that? No problem for fourteen days?
Technically, no.
By state law?
By state law.
Or just by Pennington County ordinance?
Well, it doesn't meet our ordinance requirements. During that fourteen day rule, the state does not issue the lodging licenses.
Right, so they can technically.
So recreational vehicles in our ordinance are required in RV parks. So if they want to rent a recreational vehicle, it's more appropriate in an RV park. This comes as, this has been in front of our Planning Commission a couple of times where an individual had a piece of property within a residential neighborhood and they asked for a CUP to allow the recreational vehicle to be a vacation home rental, and they were denied. So the Planning Commission has kind of set precedence on that. Now, if you're within a recreational vehicle park, or then you could do it, it's essentially, it is a VHR, it could be.
Have y'all compared this ordinance with neighboring counties? And the reason why I ask that is because I don't know neighboring counties have Airbnbs and their RV and people who have RVs on their personal property. And then that may put Pennington County at a disadvantage in the Airbnb world if we're trying to sudden ordinance that sets that.
So typically, if people want to use recreational vehicles, they do apply for CUP under the recreational vehicle park. So they'll do four or five spaces and then they can do it as a recreational vehicle park.
Right, you're talking about a park. I'm talking about a single RV on someone's property.
Right, and right now they aren't allowed and our Planning Commission has denied the two that have been in front of them. So they had set the precedence and they did discuss this and they still recommended it moving forward.
But my question was, did y'all look at the surrounding or neighboring counties to see what they're doing? Because it may put us at a disadvantage if they're allowing it.
Right, it would be difficult. In Mead County, they don't have zoning, so they may allow it. So that would be, you know, not really comparable for us, because they don't have zoning. And I'm not sure what Lawrence County does for them. I know that they don't address VHRs, they don't have an ordinance for VHRs at this time.
Right, I'm just kind of opposed to it for the simple fact that I know that people are doing it in other counties and they're doing it in a responsible way. And I think we put ourselves at a disadvantage if we don't allow that in our county.
Chair.
Are you done? Ms. Hagcock.
I believe you're a conflict of interest, Mr. La Croix, and if you'd pass the gavel to Ross Connect, for me, it would be more. But the process and procedure is supposed to be done with abstention and you're not supposed to be facilitating or speaking on this issue at this time. So you are a conflict of interest because you do have a vacation home rental. So I would feel more comfortable, and I think based on the rules of conflict of interest and abstention, sometimes people go down from the dais or they pass the gavel off like you have before or I have, when it has to do with an issue that I have conflict of interest. So at this time, I think you need to pass the gavel off to be fair and just on this issue and follow the rules of abstention and conflict of interest, sir.
Well, I can most definitely pass the gavel, I have no problem with that.
At first, it's good, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews. Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Drews.
So what we have before us, I think, is the result of denial by the Board of Commissioners of the original amendment that came before us. And so this was reworked and I think that, you know, the Planning Commission is of the hope that this particular amendment now will meet with the satisfaction of this board. I think that they understand that this is not a, something that's going to be the cure all forever, that amendments may come back to this, in fact, could be substantial amendments down the road to this probably, depending on the course of that, you know, vacation home rentals take in the course of the next few years. So I would encourage your consideration of this as it is presented, as a, really a project that Planning Commission, I believe, was very hopeful would meet to our satisfaction and could be approved.
Brittany, I got a question. If we went back three or four years ago and looked at the ordinance as written then and what's in front of us today, could you just highlight some of the major changes? One that comes to mind would be the one acre rule. That was always the, if you have one acre, you know, you're good to go. So are there any others that you can think of? Because you live with this day and night and I don't see it all the time.
So this would allow in any zoning district outside of the industrial zoning districts, as long as they can meet all the license criteria. So there is no acreage minimum on this one. It is still prohibited in floodways, but other than that, it is allowed on any acreage and in any residential or commercial or highway service district.
The one that I always had problems with was the density, and I don't see anything on density unless I'm missing it.
There is nothing on density in this section of the ordinance.
So they can go anywhere in the county and any number?
Correct.
Okay.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hagcock.
Thank you. So on this, I was one of them that said it was government overreach, because we didn't do that to any other property rights of different areas that we have in the county. There was just a lot of areas that were micromanaging or adding to, and it would have not been efficient and effective for a planning department to be able to enforce those. I also worked with the planning department during this to try to figure out what would be the best course of action. And I believe they work with, you guys work with this every day, you see the complaints and based on complaint base, there wasn't very many. So to change the ordinance completely and add all the other extras that were added in it, that wouldn't be able to be complied with very easily, or not by adding more staff to our planning department. So at that time, I thought, when you guys redid this ordinance, you did the right thing by the public, you also did the right thing for you guys to be able to enforce these. And like I said, if the compliance was bad, meaning if we had so many vacation home rentals and there were so many problems that people were coming in and complaining and trying to shut them down, then that tells you there's an issue. That's when ordinances need to change or policies need to change. But when there isn't, there isn't anything to do with changing the whole thing. And it was unfortunate, because people that were on that committee, it's just a committee, it's a recommendation, and you guys have to live with it every day and so do we with what those ordinance changes are. And like I said, if there's not enough changes, if there's not enough people complaining, how are we going to justify those changes that they were talking about? And that's why, for me personally, that I did not agree with it. I think they did their work, but when it came forth, it wasn't able to be justified so by the planning department or by some of the rules and regs that were on it in order for you guys to make it a good ordinance. So I think you did a great job. It's been a long time coming and it's a lot of work. And yeah, the staff does an amazing job at all this. And sometimes it becomes complicated, like we've seen the man come up last, it becomes complicated with changes in order to do what you want. But once you change your use or change the issue, it goes into a different ballgame. So the staff has only been doing their job and trying to do it right. So thank you for what you guys did and what you guys recommended, because you also worked very hard on that with that committee to bring forth these changes. So thank you.
Over the years, you know, there's been so many versions and amendments, like I said, it's hard to keep up. But the one thing I can probably conclude is that you're not going to make this version that we're looking at today where everybody's going to like it. I found that out, you're just not going to be able to please everybody, but you've got to start somewhere. So I'm going to support this. Ordinance amendment as written today, Commissioner Drews.
I would move to approve ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash oh three.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor? Uh all in favor?
Mr. Chair. I just want to point out, I do think this is a lot better product. Um I I think we kinda got rid of all the stuff. My no vote is purely because I think we're going to disenfranchise some individuals that could utilize and they'll probably figure out a way to skirt the system. Uh but I would like I like to see, knowing that we have um neighboring counties allow it, it's either gonna make us, you know, some individuals here be unavailable to do it or they're gonna figure out a unique way to bypass a product uh process with their recreation vehicle. Some people, interestingly enough, that's what they're looking for when they go somewhere. They want to drive or fly and stay in an RV even though um that's not considered a VHR in Pennington County. So my no is purely because of that. I don't, it's not because I don't like the ordinance in general. I would have liked to see us at least remove that piece of it. Sounds like the planning commission uh was pretty stummish on that, so that's the reason why I'm voting no and I'd like to see us revisit that in the future.
I think I can understand that to me a recreational vehicle has a license plate and not a nine-one-one address and that becomes an issue for me. A recreational vehicle can be started and moved overnight, that's an issue with me. So I don't know, I as far as the way the recreational vehicle is being addressed in this, I don't have a problem with it. Now, when we go to vote, how do we uh Commissioner LaCroy, do you uh vote with us?
No, abstain. On this and the next one.
Any other questions uh before roll call? Not roll call, we'll just uh all in favor of the motion uh presented by Commissioner Drews indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Commissioner LaCroy?
No, you do, next one.
On the fees, Ron.
Okay, let me get to it. Item L.
So item L is public hearing of ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash zero four for Pennington County to amend section five-eleven fees of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. And this was continued from the May seventh, twenty-twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting and the planning commission do concur with staff's recommendation and recommended approval. Um the vacation home rental license fee would be a hundred and fifty dollars every three years. And that was also in the previous um ordinance amendment.
Any questions from the uh commission?
Mr. Chair.
Uh Commissioner.
Maybe I'm confused or maybe I'm just missing something here, but if the fees, if we already did it in the ordinance or is there something else, am I just missing something with what I'm reading here? Vacation home rental fees is one fifty or is it because it's in a different section?
It's in a different section, so it's two different sections. It's in three nineteen and also five-eleven.
Nevermind.
I'll move approval.
Agreed.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Mr. Ross Connect, now that brings us up to item twenty-four, items from Commission Manager and all recognize uh Commission Manager Holly Hennies and are doing a twenty-twenty-five budget preparation.
Yes, Commissioners, it's that time of the year where it's time to start the twenty-twenty-five budget process. Um as you heard earlier today, the Compt Committee continues to work on the wage study. Um but this is the opportunity for the board to um direct staff or discuss any other budget priorities that this board would like to see for the twenty-twenty-five budgets. Um the motion is certainly not required today, it'll be back on the agenda for the next board meeting. Um but if you have any ideas or thoughts or requests for information, I'd like to know so we can discuss and get moving on that.
Chair.
Ms. Haggard.
So if we're implementing new wage study, I'd like to know basically um if we've added eight hundred two million already onto that wage study from twenty-three to twenty-four. Um is that in the twenty-four budget? And then for twenty-five, we start the other implemented amount, which is all the employees and the the rest of the people? Am I, am I saying that right? Maybe I'm not. Um and are we cutting some of the budgets to add what we're putting in for employees? Or are we just adding it to their budgets already? I guess that's the question. Number two, um for the healthcare trust board, I've had a lot of people call me employees, uh texts um and say um about the fund and then it's getting raised. I would ask, is there's any way we could inject some of the general fund into that? Make those increases a little bit lower? Um because of what I've looked at in the city and the different areas, they their benefits plus their pay is a lot different than what is happening in Pennington County and that might be some of the reason why we're losing people. Um just from listening to some of the employees on some of that. So my, it's not to beat up, it's to say, is there any way that the general fund, based on some of this, that we could inject some of the self-insured fund with some um general fund dollars? And then that would be cuts or different areas that we could do. But it would also sustain some of our employees that have talked to me that are um single or have children, family, or they are one person taking care of children. So those are the people I've heard from the most and how this is gonna affect their lives and what is gonna do uh in that process. If we can do something different, they asked if I could find some other solution. That solution, I think, is not a bad one for lowering those fees for our employees because they're the most important people we have here. Um for cutting the budget, um I'd like to know if there's ideas from the um department heads when they're implementing this because we're doing it in July. Um and we need a prelim, what are we gonna do to make the difference? Are we, like I said, are we going to um and maybe, maybe I'm wrong, maybe that implementation at this point, we've already sucked up the twenty-twenty, twenty-three and twenty-four differences into the twenty-four budget. Then what are we doing to in the twenty-five? Because I love the job descriptions, what they did. I just don't get the comparables and the market analysis. And to be fair, um Joe said they needed to have a few more weeks to work on it. Um how's that gonna compete with what's happening for our budget? We also have growth issues, as we know, I just talked to, okay, I'll be up straight Travis on some of this, on the general fund with the ag and the growth and actually Shannon from uh ag is uh and has sent out an email on that and how is that gonna affect uh the growth for not this year but next year? So some of those areas, just from being in budget, it's very hard for me to figure out that we're starting this budget to me in a late period and for us as commissioners to be able to talk to the people, understand this. And now you see my frustration with some of this um up at the dais and figure this all out by prelim budget, approve it and then come back and do it in September. So my frustration keeps being on the wage study stuff um to make it fair, competitive and sustainable and the healthcare trust board to make it sustainable because what happened in the past shouldn't happen, as one of the department heads told me, shouldn't happen in the future and how do we make it in an area, maybe we have to inject some of that, like I said, self-insured fund. So again, um it gets a little frustrating when you're trying to figure all this stuff out as a budget person and a person that has to deal with the funding of our county and then say, oh, okay, we'll just figure it out later. Um maybe that's not the case, but I haven't seen how the last was injected into our twenty-four budget and how moving forward that the twenty-twenty-five budget wasn't affected in any way by that. So um maybe that's a lot of questions, Ms. Holly. But um there are concerns because of costs and costs rising and us doing buildings and everything we've done. What's the overall, to me, picture gonna look like? And then adding costs from last year on insurance, um wages and other areas that were unforeseen. So um we were already up ten million last year. Um I would hope we can do something different and better this year with the staff and the department heads because they have done this before, I have full confidence uh that they know what they're doing on their budgets. It's just um, I'll keep saying it, I don't know that if the qualification for comparables and market analysis is part of their job description. So um I could be wrong and I'm okay being wrong, but how do we implement that? And what's that gonna cost us is huge for me, so.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drew. Oh, Mr. Laster.
Um I'm gonna go back to my question earlier about some of the data points that I think we need to make for that wage study or that I'd like for us to have before we're making a decision based on the wage study. Uh but also, uh it'd be nice, and I think it's gonna be important, um to have what is on our tax roll currently as our, you know, our standard basis and then what our growth is. But with that growth, uh I noticed something when Shannon Champion sent us an email about some of that growth with the ag, um properties that came off of the ag status that are gonna be on as growth. What concerns me is some of them are fine because it said that they're they're they lost their ag status because we're developing them or they're plating them into, you know, lots for for different things. My my concern is, and I I didn't look at the number on that one, but let's say eight million dollars of that came off and became growth and the other forty million dollars is because somebody didn't apply. So now, let's say they didn't apply because they were at the hospital, they they were out of town, they had some things they didn't apply for, but they're gonna apply next year. If we grow our budget based on that growth and then they apply the following year, that's gonna really harm us. So we need to be careful when we're looking at growth, not to max out our budget based on the growth number because it could come back and harm us. If you take it in consideration, nine hundred concourse, whenever that came off of the tax rolls, that was a, you know, that was an X amount of dollar impact on our our base budget. Same thing with the bank, uh it's five million, well, I don't know what the assessed value of it was, but that would be that amount of value coming off of our, you know, baseline for that budget. So that's something that I'd like to know is what what we're gaining and what we're losing that's coming on and going off the tax rolls because that's gonna, that may play a factor, it may not play a factor in twenty-twenty-five as far as um impacting us, but if forty million dollars of that ag, they decided to apply it and they get it later on, but we made budget decisions on forty million dollars worth of potential value, we're gonna be, we may be in a pickle. And so that's something that was very interesting to me, once I got that data from post-equalization.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
Yeah, I think if we talk to Shannon upstairs, we can get those exact numbers, what we're, you know, we can take the uh fourteen Saint Joe, nine hundred concourse, we can figure out what the assessed value was and take that times a mill, it'll be twelve, thirteen percent, we'll figure out what we're losing in real estate taxes on that.
Yep.
Uh my question would be, what should the Board of Commissioners be thinking of relative to our move over for concourse as far as the budget, is that gonna have any impact relocating uh to another facility?
Mr. Chair.
Missed that.
Absolutely, it will.
So that's something that we need to be thinking about.
Going through and working on what that projected estimated cost is. Um the building committee is also looking at the FFNE um and seeing what's appropriate and what fund will come, because like the commission office, I mean, we're gonna need some bookshelves, we're gonna need some chair mats, um those kinds of things, they're trying to decide what budget is appropriate that it needs to come out of. So we will have those costs for concourse separated out so the board is fully aware of what those additional needs will be. Um but then in conjunction with the building committee and what they're coming up with for the FFNE policy.
Okay, just something that we should be thinking about. And then uh when we did our assessment presentation in Hill City a month, month and a half ago, there was a few folks from the audience that uh wasn't the assessed value so much, it was, you know, the county spending on wisely. And I and I told them, uh these folks at the presentation that, you know, last year uh we invited the general public and and I didn't see anybody here really from the general public when we did our budget uh for those two days. So I did say that we would uh if July eighth and ninth are the dates that uh I'd like to get that, I assume it's gonna be in all the three newspapers that we, if not, I I'll I'll let the Hill City Prevailor know that uh the eighth and ninth would be our budget earnings and that if somebody wants to uh be here when we do that, that they they're certainly invited. Do we actually do that in the papers or is that just something?
We don't do a separate publication for those. We treat them at any other commission meeting and notice them publicly according to the open meetings laws. Um so they're on our website, but no, I do not publish separately a notice of them and pay for that.
Well, I'll let the Prevailor know and if they want to put it in, they can put it in.
Is there any more questions?
No, Chair, just a question. We're having a summer study this summer on property taxes and uh our bottom line is, they've been sustainable since, what, nineteen thirty-six in the county? They've kept us sustained in the county this long and now they're looking at areas that they can cut those. And my frustration is if they cut some of those property taxes, I get it, um people are frustrated, but it affects the county. Um so it affects our budget. So if state representatives get a get a say in how to cut our budget through property taxes and then have a summer study on how they can do that, to me, um that's a little frustrating. Number two, um Shannon said it, and I I told a bunch of them to go look at Shannon's uh presentation in April. When you, you wanna make a difference on property taxes, state, schools and counties, cut your budgets. Cut your budgets on things you need and not you want. See how much of the need you have and see how much the want that you have on different programs and things that could be cut so those budgets can be not risen, so those property taxes can't. He does one-on-one dummies on that and he keeps saying, and I told him, go look at it. If you can't cut the budgets and you can't cut the spending, it's it's true, Ron. I know we need services stuff, but what do we need and what do we want in this county and it's huge. So I think if we look at some of those areas for this budget, I think we can make it sustainable. We can show the public that we don't have to raise ten million, we have to raise other stuff or they don't have a sudden summer study on how to tell county, cities, states or whatever to quit spending and pick make those budgets on needs, not wants. So um I'll keep saying it, um Shannon said it best and I agree. The budgets are gonna make the huge difference for property taxes. You need services, you need those things, those are needs. So what are the needs and what are the wants of this county we're spending money on? So um that isn't just county, you can pick it on, city, state. Um if we went into the state and said, well, guess what? The state, state's charging us too much for this. Where can we go in the state and cut some areas to make their budgets fit so we can actually be sustainable in the state and not charge on so much for this area on fees? That's what they're telling us counties to do with our property taxes when it's a bottom-line budgeting issue. So I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but I went to a lot of the forums just to watch or heard about some of the forums from some of the uh participants and some of the people that have been to them and um I think they're as frustrated as me with what the what the language and what's coming out of them, so.
Mr. Chair. So the, when we set the budget, we can go what what we had last year plus three percent? No more than three percent of the consumer price index plus new growth, is that a fairly good statement?
I wouldn't necessarily say use last year's, but yes, the uh budgets are limited by three percent CPI, whichever is less.
So then if we had folks from the general public here and and we, let's just say we're doing one department and I guess the bottom line is, you know, like Deb said, needs and wants, they have to tell us what what they feel that we need and what we and what we want, that they can say, well, we don't think you need that, but it'd be nice to get some input uh when we're up here trying to figure this out ourselves so that after we do it, we we get blamed for doing it. Like if you don't like it, be here and tell us what we're doing wrong.
My thoughts are is I think uh we've done a good job for the last four years. We've had to make some budget cuts during COVID and when we did, departments stepped up and did that. And with that, we were able to fund some other, the volunteer fire departments because of that. I I think until we, I have the numbers to be able to look at, to be able to make the decision. You know, our biggest cost is our employees, our, because we're a surface-based uh facility. You know, eighty percent of what we do is mandated, nine point five percent or nine somethings percents deemed necessary expenses and that so that leaves us about eleven. us about eleven percent that, that we can work with. And so until I, we get those numbers from the Auditor's Office, I think I'm pretty much set. The direction I am is to listen to department heads and what their wants and needs are and be able to sort through those.
Chairman.
Thank you.
I think you and the rest of us need to look at the mandates and what is mandated and what is necessity and what is a want or a need. Because it's not ninety percent, I hate to tell you, but you might want to look that up through mandates, not you personally, but all of us. What is mandated and what is not? Because a lot of the programs and the things that we have added to it are not mandated. A lot of the areas that you start looking at, I don't think are mandated. And I don't think it's ninety or even eighty percent. I think it's between sixty, sixty-five, if I'm correct. So some of that, if it was that high on mandated for everybody, I disagree. Because a lot of those programs and those things that are in there aren't mandated. Those are things we have agreed to. So that's my opinion, from what I've been here ten years.
Any further directions, Kelly? Thank you, Holly.
We'll continue with how we prepare the budgets typically. You'll see on the top of each one of them which one is authorized by statute, which one is mandated. And we'll go into hearings, you'll get your growth information from Auditor Muller. And yeah, we'll continue as we do.
Okay, next is item B.
Item B is for the Board's consideration is the memorandum of understanding to host the twenty twenty-five Western Interstate Region Conference on behalf of NACO. The county in the past supported a resolution to host that conference and we were awarded it. And so now the MOU has been presented. And we just would like the Board to consider approving that so we can move forward with some additional planning.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
Do we know what this is going to roughly cost? And is there a way to make sure that we don't use taxpayer dollars for it?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hall.
A very preliminary estimate, Commissioner Lassiter, I believe in the forty to fifty thousand dollar range. But our intent is to fully gain sponsorships for that amount and not expend any taxpayer funds for that.
I'm sorry, Holly, forty to fifty, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm hoping that's on the high side, but that's just a very rough preliminary estimate.
Chair.
Ms. Haggard.
I might agree with Commissioner Lassiter. We did a resolution and on that resolution I asked what would be the cost before I agreed to it. I guess I would like to see the fifty thousand that we're getting and that, somebody that had seen this said alcohol transportation and food should not be paid for by the taxpayers, which I think we had that understanding already, Holly. But I guess I would have, in order to agree with this, I would like to see the money beforehand, that we have raised it and that we bring it back and say, okay, we raised the fifty. We don't need any sponsorships, we're good to go. Because this is also through, which I, I believe we should, through the two, it is through the, what am I trying to say? The State Association, National Association of Counties. They pay for their own, but the host is going to be the county, this county in Black Hills Council. Am I correct? Or Black Hills, what did I read on here? National Association.
State Association.
Understanding the partners for the WI is host, State Association will manage and implement the hosting requirement and guidance of approval. The other is with cooperation of Pennyton County, South Dakota, and South Dakota Association of Counties. Are they putting in money as well? Or we don't know yet?
No, we don't know yet. I'm sure with our dues, they will. A lot of what's going to happen with this is with the MOU, then we create the advertising bid and go out and gather the money. You have to have the MOU before you can actually request funding. I have no problem thinking that we're going to raise that, and we had this discussion when it first came up. We could, most definitely, NACO also brings in sponsors also, that's a good possibility. But absolutely, I, I confirm that, yeah, I don't think we as a county should have planned on doing that. All past WIR conferences have done what, what she showed in here, offered sponsorship spots and have received those sponsorships. And none of the other conferences have had a problem with doing that.
Chair, can I follow? So at this point, it would be nice, so how many, how much money have you guys raised already knowing it was coming here?
As I just said, you got to have the MOU to be able to present to them and offer them the sponsorship spots. Until we get the MOU and create the, the document to go in and say, do you want to be a sponsorship?
Okay. And what if we don't raise the amount we need? Where does that come from?
That would fall on the state, State Association and ourselves.
Okay. So I think this is a good conference, but I probably won't vote for it at this point until we have the cash flow. And if we have the cash to do it, then I will be in favor of it. Because again, taxpayers, I don't think at this point paying for any of that, and I think we're all in agreement, is not in the best interest of this county. And that would be a need, not a want, or a want or a need. So which one is it that we're spending? We spend our contingency on some of these things. Again, just saying.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
My question is about all the host responsibilities. How much staffing is that going to take? And what's, how's that going to impact some of our work here in the, in the county?
Chair.
Ms. Hall.
To be able to give you, you know, sixty hours, seventy hours, I wouldn't be able to do that at this point. But my request is if this is approved, to ask the Board to create a conference planning committee to allow us to work through some of those details. I truly, honestly, Commissioner Lassiter, I don't believe that it's going to be a significant amount. NACO has a division within them that does this, they plan their conferences. A lot of it is more us as the locals giving recommendations and they, and then in turn go out and make all of those arrangements and those agreements. So I, I don't anticipate it being a lot. I mean, in there, you can see that one of them is, of the host requirements is to have, I believe it says a minimum of four staff to host the welcome and the registration booth. Again, that's what, eight hours out of a day for a couple of staff. But other than that, I truly don't think it's going to be a significant, significant amount.
Mr. Chair, follow up. Does NACO come in and look to get the big donors to be the sponsorships on this then? Or is it our staff that has to work to do that?
No.
It would be, Commissioner LaCory is going to take the majority of that responsibility.
Gotcha.
As the WIR rep. The, the sponsorships that NACO seeks are mainly to pay for like the general session speakers and their expenses. And the MOU clearly outlines what the county's expenses would be, which the main two are to host those two receptions.
All right, thank you.
So Chair, one more question. So why I'm saying that, and Holly, that's why I'm saying it, is it's because identifying locations and financial support from the WII board directs reception approximately two hundred people. Sit down, doesn't have to be, and the beverages, two alcoholic beverages, host may invite additional guests if transportation is required. Hosts will also be financially responsible. Don't, don't, when we go to conferences, don't we have to pay for our own transportation and have mileage and all that stuff and food requirements and stuff? That's not included or is separate from this.
That, that's totally separate. This, are you talking about the WIR? You're talking about?
I'm talking about this particular conference because it, it says that. And it also says identify locations and financial support of WI conference-wide event approximately three fifty to four fifty people, including food enough for dinner and beverages to include at least two alcoholic drinks per person if transportation is required. Again, hosts will be, also be financially responsible. So that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I can explain that. They're not paying for transportation, giving you a per diem where they, they do is provide transportation to and from, just like, say, if they're, everybody would, they, it's at the monument. And this event's going to be down at, say, Gen Pro. You would have transportation, a bus to and from to bring contestants. Because whether you're going to have the Public Lands Directors, you're going to have the Western Interstate Region Board members on there. That's something that they're looking for to be able to coordinate. So they don't get paid nothing. It's just, it's part of figuring out the transportation to and from.
So kudos to putting all this together and not costing the county any money for any of this is a very positive thing. If I could vote for it if I knew we weren't going to use any taxpayer dollars. But at this point, that's not guaranteed. So for that reason, not because I don't believe this is a good thing we're bringing here, I just don't think that I can, again, say to the public that, you know, it was a good thing to bring because a lot of that sales tax and a lot of that stuff that these people are in town with are not affecting our county. They are actually benefiting from that. And I would hope the city would be one of the donors because of, of what you guys are doing for this. It would, if five hundred people brought here and all the sales tax and things, I would hope Visit Rapid City and some of the other sponsors would help sponsor it. But only because I don't know the cost of, to the taxpayers at this point. If that becomes not, I will publicly say, good job. Thank you for not using taxpayer dollars. Appreciate everything you did. And I also think the city would do the same for, for what you're bringing through. So.
I'll definitely reach out. I got my report from the Western Interstate Region Conference later on. But you're absolutely right. And I most definitely understand your concern. It's going to take some work on my part and a couple of people other that I've got lined up to go do the sponsorships. But I think it's very much doable. Visit Rapid City's been very much involved. Tyson was down there promoting Rapid City and did an excellent, excellent job. He had more contacts and more ideas of what people wanted to see in our community, all the way from the Underground Lab, Sanford's, to the care campus and that type of stuff, those discussions we're, we're having. So these people are excited to get here. I don't have, I know that's not reassuring, but I don't have a problem thinking I could raise the forty thousand or forty-five from local businesses and even the city, one way or another, to, to host this. One of the biggest advantages of this is why we're bringing it here is, number one, we have sixty-six counties in, in South Dakota. And this gives them the opportunity to come here and speak to the Public Lands Committee to express their needs for ag, for the PIL funding that needs to be done and for the school SRS fund also. So this is a place to be able to make it more affordable for our own counties to be able to come and attend. And I think that's one of the reasons why I pursued it. And, you know, we, we talked about it last year, and I think they're growing very tremendously with the new Public Lands Commission. They're doing a lot of research and getting data. And so I think it's going to be very beneficial to our county.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
Assuming we had thirty-five hundred attendees and they stayed three days and they spent an average of a thousand dollars a day.
It's going to be more like four hundred.
I'm just being conservative. And then take that number times two percent, that'd be the sales tax Rapid City's going to receive. That's two hundred and ten thousand dollars that would benefit Rapid City. So yeah, there's going to be a major economic impact with that convention.
Mr. Chair.
You got it.
Any?
Mr. Lassiter.
Any opposition with doing this motion and having it stayed in there that no taxpayer dollars to be used?
I think if we had, in order to move, move forward, putting that insecurity in on somebody's, I, I just find it difficult, I think. I, I understand what you're trying to say, but to throw that at them in the fourth quarter, it's a little tough to swallow.
Mr. Chair, I understand it. If we're going to fund this, we first of all got to get sponsorship. And to do that, we have to do this resolution today.
Yes.
So this is the, kind of the stepping or the first step in this long process. And that's why I think it's imperative that we support this motion today.
Chair.
Ms. Haggard.
I can support the motion if you put the no taxpayer dollar in it. There wouldn't be any reason to not be able to raise that kind of money, especially for kind of sales tax and things that's happening for the cities, the surrounding areas that that would impact. I think it's going to be a positive. And I don't see you not being able to raise that money without taxpayer dollars because you're not going to be able to justify it, even if it's four hundred dollars when you're part of hosting some of what's going on in your cash flow. So just saying.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I put a motion on the floor to approve the memorandum of understanding of the National Association of Counties to host the twenty twenty-five Western Interstate Region Conference.
Second.
It moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Make a substitute before you vote?
We just voted.
Holly didn't give me a chance to make a substitute.
You didn't say anything till after I.
Care making a substitute? We're not, all of us haven't voted yet, have we?
You don't, I heard three ayes.
There's five on the board.
If, if it's silent, then it's.
It's not silent. I was going to make amendment, but you, after Drew said, you went and said already. This vote, then I won't make the amendment on no using pact with the motion with taxpayer dollars not to be used. I'll be voting no then, thank you.
Next on the items.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drew.
You didn't ask for any of those who opposed. You only asked for the, those who support.
I got interrupted.
I, I understand.
Give me some credit for.
I, I understand. That's why I'm stopping and saying you didn't allow for us to vote no. That's all I'm asking.
Okay. All opposed.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with two noes.
Chair.
Ms. Haggard.
My task up. Personal privilege. So I'm not trying to interrupt, I'm not trying to do your stuff, but you keep interrupting me as well on some of this stuff. So when you say I interrupted, I didn't have a chance to do the amendment, you voted right away. So I wasn't interrupting, I just didn't have the chance to do it. So please, if you're going to say stuff on what I'm trying to do, it's more, a little bit nicer, because that's not my intention. I've been here, what, ten years? I deserve that, that respect as you give everybody else on this board. Thank you.
Truly noted. Item C, policy and procedure for executive session, Ms. Holly, any?
Yes, Commissioners, the agenda item in front of you is to request the adoption of the new executive session policy and procedure. It identifies examples of what types of items are appropriately, appropriately addressed in executive session and examples of what items should be discussed in open session. Obviously, transparency and compliance with state statute is first and foremost the county's highest priority. This policy and procedure helps guide the boards and the public alike as to the proper way to address items that are allowed in executive session. I'm happy to stand for any questions the Board may have in regards to this new process and, or policy. or policy and procedure.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. I guess my question is, I read through it, I didn't get a chance to review all S D C Ls, but is there anything in here that's outside of the S D C Ls that's in there for clarification that maybe I overlooked or missed whenever I was trying to go through it all? I was out of town through most of the weekend. We had some family stuff going on, but I'm just going to, or is this all pretty much word for board from the state statute?
That is what my goal was, yes, sir, to use the language that is in state statute. The examples that are provided are obviously examples that apply to our county and what our practices have been in the past.
Right. I guess my biggest question is if it's in state law. And we've talked about this many times with other ordinances, if it's in state law, we try not to put that in an ordinance. And so I'm just kind of wondering, or even in the policy, sometimes we just refer to it. So I guess my question is, what's driving us to put this into a policy versus it's already in state law, we should know what we're supposed to do in executive session?
Mr. Chair, this policy is in direct response to Commissioner Hancock's request for training and information on executive session. So that's why I created it.
Okay, so you created it based on that request for the training?
Correct. That she wanted to see certain things in writing, I felt, and examples. And this policy and procedure, basically, the root of it is that if you're talking about a specific individual, that is allowed to go into executive session. If you're talking about a position, a proposed position, wage scales, compensation policies in general, absolutely, that needs to be done in open session.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair. Is there, my follow-up question is, there's going to be two of them. One, did legal look at it and does it pre, did it pass Jay's or anybody else's review on it?
Yes, yes. I worked with State's Attorney, Jay Alderman, and it has passed his review.
And then the second question I have is, are there going to be more to come with some training specifically for further training, referring back to, you know, Commissioner Hancock requested policy and training and things of that nature? Is there follow-up recommended training to be considered in your future?
Mr. Chair, it was my understanding the board was not interested in doing additional training.
Okay.
So, Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
It wasn't my intention to bring something that's already state policy or procedure to the board and have them sign off on it. That wasn't my intention. It was my intention to look at what should be brought in an executive session. And also, two of us had filed on open meeting violations for that for a reason, because we didn't believe that. Not that it wasn't already in state law, but transparency and compliance with state statute is first and foremost the highest priority of this county. I don't know what's happened with that case at this point, but I'll just say, it wasn't to have it voted on an executive session policy and procedure when it's a state law. We already knew that. My issue was what was happening with some of it that was going in executive session and that I thought, in full disclosure, that not only myself, but others on the board and our staff could probably get some training on what that would be and what we could put also upfront to the public so it'd be open to the public instead of being done in executive session that I believe was an executive session. So it wasn't to sign off on this because it's already state law, as we've been told on gun control and other things. The process was, I truly believed in transparency and compliance with state statute and didn't believe that was happening. So I'll be voting no on this because it's already state statute. I appreciate that you did this, but that wasn't, and I think I had explained that, that isn't where I was going. So just my opinion, but thank you for doing the work.
I, my thoughts on this was it kind of clarifies some of the misunderstanding and so forth that was been discussed over and over. And so I think it's, I get what people are saying, it's kind of redundancy probably if you have the state law, but it's something that's been asked, and I think it clarifies a few things. Mr. Alderman.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jay Alderman with State's Attorney's Office. Yeah, Holly and I sat down and went through all of this and put it together. I'm perfectly fine, I think both of us are. If you want to just use this as kind of a reference, you know, one, because you can't find probably something like this in one quick spot that covers all of these different areas, you can look at that guide that the AG's office puts out and you can read the statute yourself and so forth. So, yeah, this doesn't have to be a policy or procedure that you vote on. If you don't want to, it can just be a reference guide that you keep with you or we can talk about over time if you have questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
I think that's actually probably appropriate. It puts it all together in there. I mean, you know, Commissioner Hancock referenced the complaint that was out there. I'm just going to say that having this, you know, since it's in state law, my follow-up question with the investigator and their determination is they're sending it to the Open Meetings Commission for review. And so that tells us that we need to have this. All of us need to be aware of what this particularly says. But again, I think we can use it as a reference tool more so than rather than adopt a given policy because it's already state law.
So Chairman.
Does anybody else want to speak before I go back second?
Sure.
Mr. Drews.
I would suggest we just change the language on the motion to say, accept, instead of approve, accept, and add in there, including the examples, because I think the examples bring it forth to very clear as to what can and what can't be done, so.
Okay. Did you want to speak before I go to Hancock?
Good.
Okay, Ms. Hancock.
Thank you, Chair. So Travis, you're saying it's going to the, the complaint is going to the, what?
Without going into further detail, I just reached out to find out what was going on with it, and they've determined to move it towards the Open Meetings Commission. I believe that's what it's called. I don't know the name of it. Jay, what's the official name?
That's it.
Okay.
Open Meeting Commission.
Okay, so if we filed something and it warrants going to the open, the state open meeting board, and it was investigated and it was done by another state's attorney, we don't think we need any training, we don't need any help on this. My point is, is not to go after our county, even though it seems like it. It's because I've been trying, and Travis has been trying to say, that this document means something. And for some reason, it doesn't seem to mean that much until you have to literally go file and figure it out through an open board that hasn't been open from, since twenty twenty. And it warrants it to go do that. It disappoints me that nobody, it frustrates me that it seems like nobody cares, that this is being violated or if it was violated, what can we do better? We can't, Jay, we, is it hard to do some training? Is it hard to look at these areas for this board or even for these department heads so they have an understanding that we don't get taken to the, to the state for this? That's why I said it's already state statute. We already know what to do, but then we have to have other people go file stuff on us, which is sad to me because we can't follow it. And then it warrants it to be violated.
Okay. Mr.?
We don't know about any violation. I've not received any feedback. I've heard nothing. So I certainly don't want to speculate as to what even went. If there's ten questions, did one go? Did ten go? Seven go? What the Open Meetings Commission, how they will opine on any alleged violation, that's up to them. I've not been a part of any of that. I'm not aware of what they're doing. So this was our effort, and I think we've always tried to give as good advice as we can possibly give. And we follow the AG's advice. So that's all this is.
So Jay.
I would rather not speculate, Commissioner Hancock. I would rather wait to see if something positive comes out of the Open Meetings Commission that can assist us. That'd be great.
It's, for me, it's not, it's not speculating. Unfortunately, we're the defendant, so that's probably why you didn't know about it in one sense, but the other, that I would hope that it meant something, that we cared enough to do that, to make sure our county was doing it right. And it seems like they don't care. By speculation, as you say, because it warrants something to be able to, to take it to a board. You have investigator that did it.
I think it's wrong to say they don't care. I don't know who they is.
I shouldn't say they, that's a bad word.
Certainly not me.
And I apologize.
I don't think it's anybody on this panel that doesn't care. So I would just caution you to not say that.
Okay, and I apologize. I apologize for they. But I also can say that I've asked over and over again, just me personally, because I've been on here long enough and I sat in the room back there long enough to know what should be on and what should not from other people that brought stuff in the back, Jay. And it concerned me enough to file on it. So tried to keep saying with the community here or the county, can we do something different to have a solution? Okay? This board had that chance to do something different. The department had a chance to do something different by having some kind of training, some kind of talk, even myself, I included, and wasn't warranted. So I guess we know what we're doing in the county, and it doesn't warrant it to even care that that is an issue. I get it because nobody wanted to do it. So I'm sorry if I said they. I should say, it's been up here more than once, and it is a concern of mine because this business of this county, Jay, I truly believe should be in the open public forum. Things should be on agendas. Some people brought it on the agendas with the same issue, some people didn't. So we were warranting some of it, which was the same issues that were going in the back. That concerned me. So I believed, not truly because they were going to do it, it's because they needed training like the rest of us, because some are doing it and some are not, that we should consider having a training of what should be on there and what shouldn't and make it simplified because I don't think, and it never was hard before, to understand that. So maybe I'm just talking to talk, but I'm not. It makes a difference. I love my county. I like being a commissioner, but I can't understand what's happening up here. I can't understand what's going on with, with some of this stuff, but I'm frustrated and then I get in trouble because I'm frustrated. Okay? I'm sorry, it warrants it. It warrants it for being a person in politics for sixteen years, that maybe sometimes people should listen, because I'm not here to hurt a county. I'm trying to figure it out. But sometimes, Jay, I'll be up straight. When you're the leaders of this commission, you don't get phone calls, you don't get emails from them, you don't get stuff from them, you cannot figure out, basically, except getting frustrated, what's really going on sometimes. And that's straight up.
Mr. Lester.
Jay, I actually kind of think I understand what you're saying. I think you made a good point. For us to do any very specific training, we would have to know what, if there was any findings of what, they said this is the issue, this is the issue. All that was not a finding. These may be findings or whatever. So to have specific training on those things would be wise after we find out something, if we find out something. Outside of that, I guess, and this is just kind of what I've heard, maybe just kind of reminding us when we're in executive session, especially when legal counsel's in there, that, you know, if we, if we go astray when we're in there, rein us back in. That is what we should really be focused on and have you do, or whoever's in there, I should say, not just you, Jay, because you're not always the only one in there, but rein us back in so that we're not going astray while we're in there and just thump us over the head with this.
I'd like, Mr. Drews.
I would move to accept the executive session policy and procedure, including the examples as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Roskinet. Any further discussion?
Is this, Mr. Chair, is this more just as an example rather than, okay, I just want to make sure that we're.
Not a policy, just accepting it. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no from Ms. Hancock.
Thank you, Holly. I already knew the state law, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Item D.
Item D is a newly proposed compensation pay corrections policy and procedure. This is in response, again, desires to streamline processes to be more efficient and effective. These would only be for compensation pay corrections that are due to clerical or record-keeping errors. The current process requires the board approval for any changes requested that are outside of the normal administrative process. The Department of Legislative Audit requires documentation of board approval that the auditor must keep with each change made, which is why these items are placed on the agenda for approval. In order to streamline this process, a policy and procedure can be established, which will be accepted by D L A if approved by the board. So what the board has in front of you is the policy and procedure that basically says if it's due to a clerical or record-keeping error, a request can be made directly to the auditor's office with a memo submitting the information and the reason why. And Human Resources will verify that the pay correction is within the county's established policies and compensation policies and sign off on that, and it will be corrected in the next available pay period. We also put a provision in the policy that if either the Human Resource Department or the auditor's office believes special request needs to be given and special board approval, they both reserve the right to place it on the agenda.
Any questions?
Stand for any questions.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
So what do they do when they have the Planning Department or the Treasures Department that need changes in their stuff? Do they have to go and worry about Legislative Audit? Because it seems like, from what I learned from Julie and people from the treasure from the past, is all they do is correct it, it's already in the budget. So process and procedure is already in place. What they do is just correct the issue, whether it be the Planning Department, whether it be the Treasures or the auditors on this, because again, it's already in the budget. So if they make a mistake, there's no reason to come to us. And that was what I said on the dais before, there wasn't any reason to bring it in executive session or upfront at that time because it can already be done and it's been done in the past. That's how we've always done it. And then it's given to whoever does the correction and pushes it in there, and it's made on the next paycheck or the next area where it's deducted or deducted. So I'm trying to figure out what this means because it's already being done.
Mr. Chair.
Can you clarify?
Commissioner Hancock, that is not a correct statement.
Okay. Tell me what's correct, please.
Any type of pay corrections that are outside the normal administrative process are placed on the commissioner's agenda for approval. So they are not done behind the scenes, they are not done just directly through. Any type of pay correction that has been placed on the agenda for board approval.
So when I had the pay corrections of a couple of people, when, remember I had the packet? Those pay corrections were done in executive session, Holly. And then all you said, which I appreciated, was those things should probably be corrected if that's where you're going. In the future, we can do it upfront. You just can't put a name on it, you just have to put the correction. So I'm in agreement with that, if that's where we're going. But in that time, it wasn't done that way. So if this is moving forward and this is where you're going, I agree with it. To put it upfront, don't put the name on it, and it doesn't have to go in executive session. It actually can move up forward on reclassification or a pay correction or whatever can be done by the department heads unless it's above and beyond the scope, like you said, and it doesn't, it still can be on the agenda. Make sense?
No, I'm clarifying because if this is by air, you still got to bring it, you're going to be putting it on here for, like, the consent agenda, but you have to have the employee's name to do the correction.
Correct.
So it's, if it's an error that they didn't change the classification and it's gone by three months and then you have to catch it up, you still have to put the person's name on our agenda to do it, whether it's executive session or.
No.
No?
No.
Mr. Chair, this policy would allow for that correction to be submitted directly. I believe what Commissioner Hancock is referencing is when we were doing some of those compression adjustments and some of those other wage changes previously, that we would do them in a group and therefore it would be placed on a regular agenda because you're not talking about the individuals and their performance. Those were done in open session as a group.
Okay.
Anything out, and those were outside of established compensation policies, so those would still require board approval. These ones, like, for example, the one that keeps coming. These ones, like for example, the one that keeps coming up to my mind is the, the public defender's office, who didn't get their referral bonus submitted in time, that had to come in front of the board for special approval. Under this policy, that could be submitted directly to the auditor.
Yeah.
Get it done, get it taken care of. Um, Sheriff Mueller recently brought you guys another pay adjustment that was missed. Um, that one could have been done administratively and just sent through. That's what this policy is attempting to correct, is anything that's due to a clerical error, to just administratively be able to get it done.
Thanks for the clarification, because I think we've had multiple different things going on.
So that, that might follow up? So that's what I was saying when we talked to Holly the first time. Um, she had noticed when I brought up some of those things that they could be done differently, um, or changing them to do them differently, which is simplifying for department heads to do some of this and also not bringing so much, um, difference on missed hire dates or, and their performance, because I know already from talking to Brian that they already do some of this without having to bring board approval on some of it. So just depends on, like Holly said, is it an exception, meaning is it something above and beyond that we do for, based on, uh, policy and procedure? So I get that. Thank you.
Mr. Lauster.
I just have a question, um, and, and I like, I like being able to streamline this and everything, so it won't get wrong, that's special consideration. Um, I guess my question that, and I think I was thinking the same one you were thinking of, um, Holly, about the, um, the deputy that had somehow got skipped and there were several months, if I remember, is that the one you were thinking of? Is there something in place where if something like that happens, is there like a, a threshold on that or simply because it's still just an error? We're saying it was budgeted, it should have happened, somebody just didn't key it in or whatever, it doesn't matter the back pay in that one, we're going to stay to move it forward or, you know? I, I guess that's the, the question that I have, is there kind of a threshold for that, just to make sure that we're not having a lot of, I'm not saying that we're going to have a lot of errors, but, you know, if there were errors and all of a sudden people are getting back pay bonus, I don't want to call it back pay bonuses, but you know what I'm saying? And then we're, we're having a large amount of money that outflows.
Mr. Chair.
That comes to us.
Way I envision that is the threshold would be set by the auditor and the HR director as to what they feel is appropriate. Um, if they feel it is a ridiculous request, they're going to bring it and put it in front of you. If we have a specific department that keeps making the same amount of mistakes, obviously HR and the auditor are going to have private conversations with that department to make sure that it stops happening and that they have the correct procedures in place so that it doesn't happen again. Um, but if the same problem keeps happening, I envision them bringing it to the board and holding that department head accountable and saying, you're going to have to go in front of the board and explain this, because we're not doing it anymore.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion.
Moved by Drews to approve, and seconded by Lauster to approve compensation pay correction policy and procedure as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay. The next item I have in front of you for your consideration, and it's a new policy and procedure on how we handle consent agenda items. Um, again, just another item that has been in practice for many, many years, but to be able to get it in writing, so everybody is under the same understanding of how we do it. Um, the two differences that I'm recommending from current practice would be to place certain abatement applications on the consent agenda. If the application is originated from staff, um, and it's been already recommended for approval by the, um, appropriate township or municipality, um, I believe that it would be more efficient and effective if we just read it into the record as part of the consent agenda. And then vouchers. Um, if the board so chooses, we would move vouchers to the consent agenda with one exception, and that being if the voucher is listed for an individual commissioner for their personal business, we would pull it off and put it on the regular agenda to give that commissioner the opportunity to abstain from the vote.
Is there any questions for Holly on this? Did you have more, Holly? Sorry.
Just wanted to make a note that this policy and procedure, I don't want it to come across as a rubber stamp by any means. Um, any commissioner and any citizen retains the right to pull something off of the consent agenda if they wish for it to have a separate vote or further consideration and/or discussion.
My, my comment would be is, that is true. I mean, uh, I think other boards have more stuff on their consent agenda than ours and you always have that opportunity to pull it. And quite frankly, a lot of them, two or three, one or two or three get pulled anyhow, but, uh, I think your additions, the abatements and the vouchers, I think, is good policy.
Chairman.
Ms. Haggard.
So the only thing I was, um, asking and, and Brian's been doing is some of the reclassifications and promotions. We wouldn't put anything on the agenda that would be negative towards our employees. I mean, that's just a given. But anything that is something, um, that is a new hire or a reclassification and promotion, I don't believe, that's my, uh, opinion, that it gives the public a false sense of authority. I think what it does is it's open to the public so they can read these things, let alone, I'll keep saying, the employees are saying the same thing. When someone's reclassed or gets a promotion, it's a positive. Um, Brian has brought these forward again and again, and I think some of this stuff should have to be in the minutes to try to find it. Um, those things are, are.
Ms. Haggard, that's the next agenda item? We're not talking about that agenda item right now?
We're not on 25F.
We're talking about the consent agenda preparation.
So you can beat me, Holly, because I'm, got too many policies and procedures.
I don't want to get things too.
We're doing today.
Too far confused between what we're talking about.
Okay, so the, okay, so the bottom line on the consent agenda, okay, sorry, Holly, um, I move forward, was the only thing I saw was like the highway, some of the, some of the vouchers for payments, like the gravel, and remember we had talked about this with the highway, um, some of their areas and some of the other departments where it could be, uh, on consent agenda? And I apologize, I was on the wrong thing, but, um, yes, remember we had talked about that? Um, I don't know what other commissioner, I don't know if it was Lecroy or Travis or who it was, that had put that on there, that some of those things, they do it through the cities, they do it through the counties, where we're not sitting there and having to pull off all Joe's stuff or all somebody's stuff when it's basically, if they want to talk about it, they can, um, just so the public has the knowing it's on the agenda, if they have a problem with how many pounds of gravel he has or how much salt he's buying. Um, some of that would speed up the process of our agenda as well. That's, was my, um, concern with some of that. I don't know if it was a concern, I just thought it was something positive. And that, um, one other thing, Holly, if, are we going, did we work on going digital in some of those things that we were going to do to try to streamline it? Or is it because some of us wanted paper, including myself, on some of this, that it would take longer, instead of having to, um, you already know, print 700 pages and do stuff like that? I know, um, some of the other counties do it already. We were going to use a program, start with a R, I can't remember the name, maybe Joan remembers it.
Mr. Chair, we are still working on the implementation of Granicus.
Rankus.
Is the agenda management software. Um, we have had some issues with the, um, launching of that. Um, if a board member wants to go digital, we can do that right now. If you don't want paper packets, we can absolutely accommodate that right now. Um, public packets, it's all still out there, it's all available for anybody at any time. Um, if anybody wants a copy of something, they can certainly call us and we'll be happy to print it for them.
Okay.
Um, but, yeah, one doesn't really go with the other at this point. But yes, we are still working on the launch of Granicus.
Okay, tell me what Rankus does, please, if you could.
Granicus is the agenda management software that the board authorized for us last year. Um, it will streamline and be able to, the selling point was for planning and zoning to be able to make some of their items a little easier and also be able to make our minutes searchable online for the public. Um, like I say, we've, we've had some challenges with the launching of it and the programming of it, so, uh, we're continuing to work on that. My goal is hopefully by July first, um, but it's taken way longer than it should have.
When did we start working on it?
Last June.
Okay, I knew it would take a while, but I didn't know if there's other counties that could help us or, have you inquired or is it just particular to us?
We're actually going to go, we're going to try and set up a meeting with Box Elder because they use the same software and try and learn from them on what challenges they have with it and see if we can learn from there.
My bottom line is to streamline it a little bit so the process isn't as long on the agenda and, um, some of the digital, which you already know, takes me a little bit to, uh, conform to. Um, I like writing, of course, um, but I appreciate that you're moving it forward and I just needed to know the date if we were going to try to do that different and then like to see, um, not up here, but maybe have some kind of, when you get it done, kind of show us what the difference is. Because sometimes up here, it's a little bit harder to comprehend everything, um, just getting seen at the time when we're up here on the dais.
Certainly do that. The goal is for the commissioners to see absolutely no difference in the implementation and launch of it. That is our ultimate goal.
Thank you.
With that, I'd look, the commission, any further questions or motion?
We're on E, is that correct? We're on.
Did they vote on the consent agenda policy? There's not a motion on the floor for approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda policy and procedure as presented.
Moved by Lauster, seconded by Roskinak. Any further discussion?
Chair.
Ms. Haggard.
Just one more. So then we're going to look into doing some of that still, Holly, for highway and different areas to add to it? Is that what we're saying?
Yes, Commissioner, that is one item that I do have, um, a research project on. I believe what the board is thinking is when you award their annual contracts and how long that takes, I need to research to find out if those have to be read into the record or if they can be included as part of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yes.
No, you're, you're fine, that's, me and Holly had this conversation last week, so you're absolutely right. That's something that I think me and you are on the same page with is that, so, but she has to do some research on it in order to feel comfortable that it's meeting the state requirements.
Thank you.
But, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, the last item I have in front of you is, um, in regards to the minutes and the personnel and the payroll information and the reports that are included. Um, at this time, staff is, um, recommending that we do make a change in how that payroll and personnel information is put into the minutes. Currently, right now, our process is that they are just all grouped together by department. Um, as Commissioner Haggard started to speak on, um, it would be good for public transparency and everybody to have it broken out by new hires, by reclassifications and promotions, and then by other. Um, the first two categories are pretty self-explanatory. The other category would include any pay changes for employees that may result from a demotion, voluntary position change, wage corrections, those kinds of things. Um, so we do support that change and can implement that right away. The reports, it was asked about why they're placed in the minutes and not on the consent agenda or an agenda item. And the reason they're in there is that state law requires the board to publish on them, but the board, it does not require the board to take any action on them. So again, in order to meet state law and be any full transparency for the public, the reports, um, the auditor's account of the treasurer is placed in the minutes at the end. So it would be my recommendation that the board, um, still continue with that same, um, process, but that we do make a change in how we report on the payroll information.
Chair.
Ms. Haggard.
So on this, we'll disagree, Holly, just because of the minutes, it's something we have to approve anyway later, so why not have it on a consent agenda where the public can see that we approved it and not through the minutes? Um, again, like reclassifications, promotions, stuff that isn't negative, um, should be upfront. Um, again, some of your department heads are already doing that, so I don't think it is a false sense of authority because they've been doing it. So, um, for me, um, if that's our direction, I, I won't agree with that. I think the process always should be open as we can to the public. Um, I agree that it's in the minutes, but, um, if we're voting on those and we're giving people those, I think, um, a lot of people don't see the minutes, they see those things on the agenda and when the pulley's sitting out front and we're giving promotions and stuff, just like we did, um, the other day from the, not this meeting, but the other meeting, um, some employees actually came back and said stuff. That was really cool to see that, you know, to see that from, uh, what was happening in the sheriff's office. So, um, it's not just the sheriff's office that that has happened to, but I'm just saying, um, some of that is cool, and the new hires, all that stuff. Um, I don't think it's a false sense of authority, I think it's the opposite. I think the more open to the public on the agenda we have and not placing stuff in the minutes, um, is just more transparency, but just my opinion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinak.
Holly, on your, uh, item F, if you go down to, it says personnel payroll information, then you get new hires. And for this particular one, it says three, four, 2024, Anna Marks at $20.19 an hour. I, I, I'm just curious, could you, uh, we were talking about benefits and what they're worth, uh, would it be possible that, to add another per hour, see what the, see what the cost of benefits is for this particular person and then put that down, what that equates to per hour? Then we're really looking at what they're getting paid for, per hour.
I, we, we are talking on policy and procedure for a person, for the advertising.
I'm just looking at this example in this presentation. Where it says personnel payroll information is part of the presentation.
I think I got you. I could concur with that.
Because the statute says, publish wants any salary paid to any officer or employee. And how I interpret the word salary is their base pay.
Okay, I just think it's important that we start trying to be able to get an idea what the benefit package is worth, because if we're going to do a wage study and we're comparing hourly rate wages to other counties, and I know that information might be hard to get from the counties, we can get what they're getting per hour, but we don't know what the, the value of the benefits are, but I think we need to be trying to compare apples to apples and oranges, oranges on this. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
In response to Commissioner Roskinak, I, I, I think it would be quite a challenge and it would probably be, uh, of some concern for some employees, uh, various employees receive different benefits because of what they don't need or benefit themselves when they come here. And so it's going to show, if, if you start doing that, it's going to show that disparity out there. Uh, I can see that raising more questions than not having it, or than having it out there. So I would suggest that, that you go strictly with the salary and leave it at that.
Okay, well, I was just trying to, if I couldn't, uh, try to get an idea what benefits are worth, but I can see where you're coming from, so anyhow, thank you for your clarification and, and where the problems would be trying to do that.
Chairman. So how do we determine, and I agree with Commissioner Roskinak, they're not going to say what kind of benefit, they're just going to say whatever they make this plus the benefit. They're not going to say medical, um, eyes, whatever. Um, and each department would have that already broken down, because that's how they, uh, do a total benefit package when they do their budgets. So it doesn't say how come, and it doesn't cause disparity, but it'd be nice if we're doing a wage study, those benefits are going to be huge, like Roskinak said, on that total amount of what is going to affect the healthcare trust board, let alone, uh, the budget. So again, if, like I said, the suggestion for me before the healthcare trust board, if that's going to be an issue, it's going to be huge to know those numbers, because I still think the self-funded, self-insured fund could be, um, added to, so those benefits aren't such a high, uh, premium on them. So, um, I think it's a huge thing to look at, uh, for the future of what's going on with the wage scale and, um, just the budget in general. So I'm in concurrence, I don't know if we have to publish them, and I don't think other counties, if I'm correct, Holly, published, they just published salaries. I'm not in agreement with, uh, publishing the benefits, but I would like to see that for the budget, um, broken out, um, on each department of the, the difference on the budgets or the benefits for their employees.
Yeah, I'm, I was just going to say that this is how we publish them, that's what this topic is, and I think, uh, we're going to have that. is. And I think we're gonna have that other discussion at our next meeting as far as knowing what the benefits are and so forth. But right now, this is just on the publication.
Just so they know the direction.
Yeah, well, publication of the wages. Exactly. With that, Mr. Laster, did you have a question?
No, actually, I was gonna say, as I was looking through this, I kinda, I concur with the way it looks. I don't think we would need, and I'm just making sure I understand, this is just be printed in the minutes, like your example, but we wouldn't take action on it. The reason why we shouldn't take action on it is because it may be something that's already had action taken on. So there's no reason for us to take action, but publishing it in the minutes so that the public has the transparency that it needs. I'm tracking it. I'm understanding it.
Great. I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move, this is F, right? This is F. Move to direct staff to separate out the personnel payroll information in the meeting minutes by new hires, reclassifications, slash promotions, and other.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Druze. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
No.
Oh, one no?
Mine was just because it could have been on the agenda, not that she did.
Okay, one no from Ms. Headcut.
Thank you.
Next up brings this up to items from chair or commission members. The time for individual members to bring forth ideas, concerns to the full board, official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time. Direction may be given to bringing items back before the board for future consideration.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Just to give everyone a heads up, the guard unit right next to the airport reached out to me due to the notification. They're starting their circling. They were just notified recently, I don't have all the details on it, by the EPA about their PFOS, PFO issue. And so they reached out to me to start the conversation about moving forward with public forums and things of that nature. So I have a meeting scheduled to later this month. When I have that meeting, I'll bring back, you know, information from that conversation. It sounds like they're interested in doing something similar that we've already been doing with Elsworth Air Force Base and Sadida for the PFOS issue at the base. I don't know what that's gonna look like. I don't know if they're gonna, if they're gonna just wanna get some more information. They want to ask me a lot of questions and then figure out the best way to communicate with the public and have public forums. And so I don't know if they wanna do, combine those with the base, or if they're wanting to do their own. They obviously want the county's input and help with it, like we've done with the other.
Well, you're the one with the experience with it, so.
And believe it or not, I've been asked whenever I'm completing my term if I was to help, and I've told them yes. So but we'll let that be a discussion, just letting you know after I have that meeting, I will come back with some information of what they're looking at, hopefully, and then what, you know, talk to you, to us about what we would be interested in, if we're willing to do the same thing that we are doing currently or not. Who knows?
Very well.
Chair.
Ms. Headcut.
A couple of things. So when we stop conversations up here, when I'm trying to explain something, I appreciate it, you can stop my conversation and get, say, get back on subject to say I'm not telling the truth when I'm trying to get to that truth, I think is uncalled for. I get frustrated, and I apologize if I get frustrated, but it's not just me. When people on this dais, and it's not just me, that tell people they can do better and telling the staff that they can do better, that people that come up here should read from a phone or from a piece of paper, it's not from the heart. You don't stop any of these people from this dais saying any of that, but you stop me. I feel frustrated that if you want to stop me, I'm okay with that. But stop me by saying, get back on subject. I'm okay with that. But not to stop other people when they're doing the same thing and going after the public or the employees. We've seen that in equalization as well. One of the ladies was totally frustrated by one of these commissioners. So let's all be fair and just, not only to me, but other people, how they treat employees up here and the public, because I'm getting complaints as well. So just food for thought. Don't just stop me. Stop everybody and I won't be so frustrated. And you can, Chair, stop me, I'm okay. Just say, get back on subject, Deb, you know, and then I will try to explain why I didn't get on subject. Because it's frustrating when I watch other people just talk when they wanna talk, or they say things to the public or to the staff and nobody says anything. So let's make it fair and just for all the members of this board. And that's why I said what I said to you and I apologize. It's just because it gets frustrating when it seems to be me. So yes, I am emotional up here and I do have some issues with frustration. I do. And I am the girl on here, and I apologize if that frustration. I went to a planning commission and the same woman did the same stuff I did that was on there, and nobody got mad at them. So I didn't say I could do better, and I will try to do better, but please be fair to the whole group here and stop other people when they're doing the same thing to our staff or to our public. I appreciate that, Chair.
No, I appreciate those comments, Deb. And so my safe word is gonna be get back on subject?
Then if I don't, you go over here and beat me. Because sometimes I, I just, and I'm not, I'm not perfect.
No, I'm not. I'm not blaming you. I know things get emotional up here, and when they get emotional, sometimes they don't.
I don't stop, or other people don't stop.
That's why I said my safe words, get back on subject.
Thank you. And if I don't, you say, Deb, you told me to say that, and then I'll shut up, I promise. I hope. I'm gonna hope.
That sounds good. Next week come up, do you guys want my report last? And mine might take a while, so I'll just, I'll go with Travis.
Well, I didn't go to the building committee. On Tuesday, I had some issues with my wife and one of my kids, so we had some family stuff that we had to take care of, had a couple of individuals with medical stuff. So I was not involved in anything this week. That was quick.
Okay, thanks, Travis. Mr. Druze.
Well, planning commission stuff that we dealt with, we did today in our session, so that's done. Commissioner La Croix and I this morning attended the unveiling of the new bookmobile by the library. And it's a neat mobile unit. I think it was already put in use last weekend down at one of the city parks. And we had some rave reviews, including from the mayor, who got his new library card issued right out of the mobile unit. So it's operating. It's been quite a while since we talked about it going to be put in use, but it just recently arrived in town, so it's good to go. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mr. Druze. Ron?
I printed out all my reports and left them at the house, so I'm just gonna kinda go over some of the meetings that I had. Some of these will be actually committee meetings, and some will just be items from the commission. So on the 7th of May, I sat down with Joe Miller and we went over the wage study presentation that he had. And on the 8th, I did the, Travis and I did a tour of the juvenile detention center, Pennyman County Juvenile Detention Center. That was a real good tour, and I didn't know that kids could go over 20-foot wall with razor wire, but I guess they can. On the 8th of May, I attended the Rochford Fire Service Board meeting in Rochford. That was a good meeting. Got to meet some firefighters from the other districts. On the 9th of May, I met with Pat Hall. We did a site inspection. He was having problems getting a, an address so that he could get electricity, and Pat called me and said he got that resolved, so then had a happy ending. On the 10th, I met Holly, we did, we attended the Black Hills Association of County officials, and we did that in Leeds, South Dakota. It was a good meeting. I'm glad to see Wendell, he's the chair, yellow ball. I think he's doing a good job, kinda teaching us some things that we probably didn't know, the Dakota traditions and whatnot. On the 13th of May, I met with Fern Johnson at her residence, and we did, went over some appraisal procedures. On the 13th, later that day, I met with Joe Miller and Vern Goodson and his neighbors in Dark Canyon, and there's a number of oak trees at Highway Mart to be cut, and the neighbors really wondered what they, you know, they were concerned about those trees being cut. I'm assuming they're 100 years or older, so that's, Vern's gonna kinda take the lead on that. I think there was a number of trees. Highway got it down to three. I don't think they even want those three cut. And so they're gonna be probably coming in front of the commission and see where that goes. But I did do the inspection. Later that day, I met with Lenny Roth, and he's a gentleman with the solar, I don't have the name of the company right here, but I think they visited with each of you, so you understand the 1,000, 1,200 acre solar, wind power, whatever. And they're gonna be coming in front of us again, too. And then we had the building committee on the 14th. Later that day, I was the moderator for the candidates for Ward One and Ward Two and the mayor for Hill City. And that's it.
Thanks, man.
So you lucked it in to bring the full reports, it would be a couple hours.
Deb?
So where am I at? Pennyman County Housing basically did a bunch of cleanup items, and all the residents got back into the Memorial Park Apartments, and we gave gift certificate, gift cards to everybody that went above and beyond for that at that meeting, which was very kind. And I suggested that we should give Mr. Susi, since he from all the police department and first responders, he went above and beyond to try to find food, so we didn't have to pay for residents just eating at the motel, that it would be more cost-effective to do meals on meals. Mr. Susi was in charge of that and got it done for us. So I asked if we could do something nice for him. Just like I said, we approved a lot of the areas where we're redoing buildings and we're gonna end up selling Black Hills workshops, some of the scattered housing that is moving forward. LAPC, that was really good. Kevin gave me a tour of the 911, which he's really doing some really positive stuff in there for training in different areas to look to his employees to try to better the environment there. It's a good environment. It's just sometimes when you're learning and things, it's a little bit different with those computers and things. So Nicole, watching her with her new group, I think there was like four of them that she was training. It was pretty cool. But the LAPC talked more about the landfill. They had a representative, Buck, his name was from the landfill, telling us what kind of products not to put, what to put in some of the landfill. One of, some of the stuff was when you have sharp objects, you wanna put them in a big, hard plastic container and then put bleach in it to try to dissolve them. Just some really interesting tips on certain areas for landfill and LAPC. I like all the people. There's such a variety in there that they have some of the cert classes that Alexa was telling us about. Kay Rapinski took one of those and she liked it because she liked being the victim and them dressing her up and stuff. So it was pretty cool to hear about some of the classes and what Brandon's doing and Alexa with that. JSE Joint Powers Meeting was good. They signed the agreements between the counties for the joint powers agreement. Again, one of the, the people will be moving to a different area, not anything bad. Melissa just wanted something to do different. She's been a very positive voice for JSE. That's really bad, but I think it's Lynn that's taking her place. She's been with us, she's 20-some years. She'll be a positive as well, taking her place. She became the secretary because Melissa was moving to HHS. Also, I did take the tour. I've been at JSE for a while, so I didn't need the tour. Been there for speeches and different stuff for the kids there and to help them with some of their areas that they needed help on. This time, I'll probably be there guarding out front. But the luncheon was very kind. Salma, Helene, and a lot of the people from the corrections facility working there, that work there, and they're always very kind. Anything else that I might do? Hopefully not. Okay, I'm good.
Okay, I'm gonna, I think it's best if I read some stuff. First of all, I need to, I attended the Western Interstate Region Conference. I'm the state rep, presenter for South Dakota. But I think it's important that I read what, what is about WIR first and what's involved. And then I'll get into the report of the conference. And I've got a couple of things I wanted to read on that before I talk about some of the pictures up here and what happened. But about WIR, it's the Western Interstate Region serves the county to navigate for public policy issues facing the West. WIR is affiliated with the National Association of Counties and is dedicated to promotion of Western Interstate within NACO. These interests include public land issues, including use and conservation, community stability, economic development, promotion of the traditional way of life. Its members consist of the State Association of Counties in 15, it's now 16 Western states, including Alaska, Arizona, California, Colorado, Hawaii, Idaho, Montana, Nevada, New Mexico, North Dakota, Oregon, South Dakota, Utah, Washington, Wyoming, and Minnesota, and a new associate member that was approved at this meeting was Nebraska. WIR is dedicated to promoting clear understanding of challenges facing county officials of the 16 Western states and serves as valuable resources for exchanging information about Western county governments for NACO, Congress, and administration to all county officials. The WIR board has established the following goals: promote responsible land management in the West, pursue equitable payment for county expenses associated with public lands not subject to property taxes, and sustain the Western quality of life, and to promote the county officials as conveners. So I'm gonna give you a little report that was stated about the state of public lands and counties. And this comes from the new, from Wes McCart. He was voted in as the new president of the WIR. But this was a report. The Western Interstate Region met during a tenuous moment for public lands and counties, with funding for federally managed ground still up in the air, the looming publishing of the U.S. Forest Services Rules on Homegrown Forest, and the Bureau of Land Management recent rules that places conservation on equal footings with other multiple uses. West states, we have the administration that has thrown out hundreds of, hundreds of new rules, a lot of which will affect the West. McCart said during the annual business meeting, we've got a lot of work to do ahead of us to protect our constituents back home. The PIL program remains subject to the whims and appropriation process for the fiscal year of 2025. The budget and secure rural, the SRS programs remain unauthorized through, there is an opening for it to be included in the farm bill. And I do have an update on that. And this came in on the 21st at 5:30 in the morning. And this comes from Mark Rico from the Buck Lands. Says, hello, Public Lands Committee and WIR Board. I wanted to share with you a quick bit of information that NACO got last night regarding the reauthorization, reauthorization of the Secure Rural School Program. We learned that the House Chair of the Agriculture Committee, Representative Thomas, is planning on adding the SRS authorization into the House version of the farm bill that will be marked up next week. This is still a long road ahead before Congress, and both House and Senate passes, and the President signs a new farm bill, but this is excellent progress, and it gives us a clear path to reauthorization, reauthorize SRS. We will keep you posted as we learn more, especially as we approach the May 23 committee markup of the House Agriculture Committee. Please keep the pressure up and working. And you guys, while I was gone, sent out those. you guys, while I was gone, sent out those notices to rounds and so forth. So, then it says we have some time to, we talked about the SRS NACO Chief of Government Affairs, Mark Rico, told the WIR Board Directors, there are many moving vehicles to SRS that can be attached and we want to hitch a ride with the next moving train, which is the farm bill. So, one of the other things I wanted to state was the direct appeal to lawmakers by county officials helps NACO advocacy efforts. The U.S. House Representative re- recently passed a series of bills affecting public lands, including the West Act of 2023, which would revoke the Bureau of Land Management's recent, recently finalized conservation and landscape health rule to, and prevent BLM from introducing similar rules in the future. NACO's National Center for Public Lands Policy is continuing its fundraising efforts to endow the investment fund that would finance the center's operation with six million dollars pledged so far of the fifteen million goal. The center will compile land use and natural resource plans from legal analysts, data, and more resource, uh, resources to value public land in counties. So I wanted to kinda share that with you to give you an idea of what some of the work that the Public Lands is doing and the research. Um, at this conference, they also elected new officers at the end of the conference and that is the new president is Wes McCart. And, of course, I didn't put, he's from Washington State Stevens County. The newest vice chair is John Peters. He's from Mono County, California. And the second vice president is Dwayne McColl from Fremont, Colorado. Past president is John Epsy of Carbon. Um, I can tell you, we did, one of the site visits I did was the Sierra National Forest and we, we looked at their forest management plan that they have going on in California there and another area. And quite frankly, you know, what kinda goes into this, if you see the, the, the fuel that's on the ground in the Black Hills, this is nothing compared to what you see in Mariposa County. You can see those big logs up there piled up. That's not just one. I think, uh, you can see where a fire burned in another area that we, we toured. Um, I don't know if I got you very much. There you go. That was pretty typical, the log size up there compared to ours in South Dakota. And, and they were all over, as I consider it, fuel. And this area, they're talking about management and we talked about the federal funding for fuel management and, uh, fire prevention. And they, they talked about how the, the, uh, budget for the federal government is two billion dollars per year and it's still not enough to do, to do what needs to be done in, in the forests. But I was quite thrown back at all the fuel that was laying, laying around. And this was supposed to be a forest management area, especially after touring ours and touring some in Washington. So, but I was really disappointed in one of the comments that I thought one of the, uh, National Forest Rangers had made. He kinda said that, uh, forest management was the blame to the fires. And what he meant by that was we got so good at putting out fires, in his words, and I heard this more than once in the conference, that, uh, when they do, that that's what creates a lot of this. He thought natural burns was the way to go and I, and I totally disagree. One of the things that they're planning on doing, they've been working on in California is to try and take all this, cause I mean, there is a lot of fuel there, uh, to try and make it into pellets for heating and so forth. And I've heard that here, that they've spent, uh, I wanna say, I got it written down somewheres. I'm gonna throw out a false number on this. They did a study and I don't have it, but the cost was, I, I rate around, I think three million dollars to do the study for this pellet stove, uh, pellets and make it into pellets and to rail and shipped in overseas. Apparently Europe is a high user of these, not, nothing in the U.S. That's been talked for quite a few years that I know. Uh, right now in our community, when it comes to pellets, they're looking at the quality of the wood. It's gotta be the same type of material, uh, the additives that's in it. And right now, it's not feasible. You almost have to pay somebody to take it. Well, you do have to pay someone to, uh, mitigate, uh, the fuel. So, that was one of the big, big things that we discussed, besides the fact that, uh, we had our board meeting, did these site visits. We also, I had a meeting, uh, on the old growth with the Black Hills, or not Black Hills, but the National Forest Board. One of the things that it, there, this national, uh, this old growth executive order that come down, uh, earlier last year, uh, the Forest Board, the way they come across to, to me, when we, when you start doing forest management plans, you have to go out and do studies on the area and so forth. They seem to believe, the way they communicated to me and the other four that attended, it was supposed to be a half hour meeting and it ended up going for two hours. Um, but the Forest, uh, Service Personnel may, seemed to think that it was gonna help with the forest management plans. But, uh, I can tell you, Skip Brandt from Idaho County, John Peterson from California and, and Greg from Montana and so forth, the questions that we had when we were in there, and also Wes McNutt, the president, were there, uh, we disagreed with them. Uh, in, in fact, Skip from, uh, from Idaho had made the commentary, had one forest management or one plan in his county that's been held up for ten years and he felt that this old growth, uh, policy that they're trying to bring down would probably, is just another piece of legislation or another step that you'd have to go through and felt it'd be difficult for him to do the stuff that he's doing. Uh, and Skip had brought up, uh, or Greg from Montana had brought up that, uh, excuse me. From Oregon, the Oregon's commissioner had brought up, you know, he's the largest, uh, management of trees in the U, uh, U.S. He had brought up that he's only had four sawmills or five sawmills shut down to the forest manager. And that was, that's when our discussions too focused on management of the forest. And if we lose all these sawmills, who's gonna be able to maintain, as you've seen all that, uh, fuel on the ground, who's gonna help do that stuff? And it's not just our local economy. We, we had one mill shut down or one partially layoffs. This starts to happen all over the place where I think we're gonna be in some deep trouble. And that's what we really expressed to them. But I was really shocked that, uh, we had a hundred and twenty eight forest management plans out there. And, you know, they, with this executive order, they, they're trying to get this done in a year and a half and I don't think it's gonna happen. But I just wanted to really express, and I'll talk to Randy Dybert about this, uh, this old growth, uh, executive order that come down. Uh, as I said, the Forest Board made it sound like it would, it'd help us more than it would hinder us, but the members that I was with disagreed. So, uh, they plan on keeping in contact with us and wanna try and do meetings every two weeks. So, with that, uh,
Mr. Chair?
With that, I can kinda.
Was there any representation, uh, from Forest Service, uh, Black Hills?
No, this was from Washington level, this Forestry Board members that gave their presentation. I, actually, quite frankly, I didn't know it was an executive order that come down.
So that old growth, how would that, that, that policy or whatever, how would that affect the timber industry in the Black Hills?
Well, as I said, they, they seem to think that it's not. I don't know the exact details on the old, old growth, cause they, they start talking about the Sasquatch trees that are, you know, two hundred years old and they're three hundred feet tall. Each one's a little bit different. You do, so California has those trees and then you go up to Alaska. Alaska's trees are less than six inch diameter, um, that type of stuff. So, um, they're still working through a lot of that. That's why they want more, that's why we're insisting more public comment.
As I, adjacent to my property at the lake, there's four or five thousand acres earmarked for commercial logging. And I met with Jim Goobles, uh, in, in his team and he, I asked him about old growth and he said that, uh, relative to that potential sale, that it wouldn't, uh, wouldn't be any effect or whatever.
Yeah. But more information will come in. Uh, this, like I said, this came down a little over a year ago, so now a whole lot of information was dwindled down. And quite frankly, I don't think they really gave us a whole lot of information except for the timeframes and, and, and I have to really step up for, you know, Wes McNutt and, and especially, uh, Greg, I don't have his name down, from Montana. You know, those guys were pretty blunt about what's happening and they, you know, to try and get something like this done in a short period of time when you don't have all the information is just isn't right. And so that, that was the highlight of, uh, as I said, is they scheduled this for half hour, we are never too. So, uh, it's the biomass production of pellets that the California is talking about doing. Otherwise, uh, that's pretty much my, my, uh, report. I did send back after my first meeting, uh, board meeting, uh, some copies of stuff and I think I'll put them in your talking points for supporting and continuing revenue payments for the PILT and, and also the SRS funding. You know, those are both up every two years and, and WIR, our, uh, labs is working hard to make it permanent in the budget instead of having to go back every two years and refight for those ones. So.
So Lloyd, do you know, is the SRS, has that been a separate bill previous and now they've added it to the farm bill?
You, you know, I don't know how they were working it. Alls I know is the report that I got back is they got it into the farm bill and that's what they figure it's gonna pass. So, uh, you know how that stuff works. They, someone. That's it for my report. If you guys have any, want any information, don't lay it back by in the back room. But with that, need to approve vouchers.
Upstaying from the first one.
Look for a motion on vouchers, uh, to approve seven million, one fifty eight, eight three eight, twenty two.
Thank you.
No move?
Second, target.
Move by Lassiter, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We need a second motion to approve voucher for the Rose Inn in the amount of two twenty two with a head cock abstaining.
So move?
Move by Lassiter.
Second?
Executed by Ross Kudak. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Move by Lassiter, second by head cock to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.